Hey, welcome to this regular meeting of the Okmas Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the business of the school board. There'll be opportunities for public comment. Those are printed on the agenda, which is also available on Board Book for those online. And tonight we start with a journey to executive session to discuss a attorney-client privileged communication and contract negotiations. Could I have a motion, please?
Point of order, do we need to take role first?
Oh, yes. Thank you. Ah, yes. Secretary Doxy, can you take the role, please?
Just waiting for the request. Tom Buffett.
I am here.
Jason Burns.
Here.
Katie Kavanaugh.
Here.
Andrew Phelps.
Here.
Gillian Wynn.
Here.
And I am here.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Trustee Phelps and Trustee Doxy for getting us back in order here. And we will start by a journey to executive session. Could I have a motion, please?
Support.
Moved by trustee Kavanaugh, supported by trustee Phelps. This does recall a roll call vote.
Tom Buffett.
Yes.
Jason Burns.
Yes.
Andrew Phelps.
Yes.
Katie Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Gillian Wynn.
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Okay, we will go into executive session. Hey, welcome back to the Board of Education meeting. Secretary Doxy, could you call the role, please?
Tom Buffett.
Here.
Jason Burns.
Here.
Katie Kavanaugh.
Here.
Andrew Phelps.
Here.
Leanie Schrether.
Here.
Gillian Wynn.
Here.
Fantastic. Everyone is here. First up, we have our admission minute around the pack. It's an opportunity for trustees to share any good things that they saw in the school district this last week or two weeks. Trustee Kavanaugh.
I will just say, I think most of us were there, but the OEF dinner was great. What was it, Wednesday? That was a really nice event as always, and just nice to see our teachers and our staff and our volunteers honored like that. So very nice.
Yes, and I'll just give a little shout out to Mary Weir and Nathan Brown for their kind of first first OEF banquet leadership. So thanks for organizing such a great event. Other trustees. Trustee Phelps.
Just real quick, two Fridays ago, I attended MSB organizational meeting workshop. It was a kind of a day-long event, just kind of went over a lot of different stuff about kind of preparing for your organizational meeting, went through Robert's Rules of Order stuff. A lot of good ideas, I think, that kind of came out of that that I'm going to, you know, discuss and hopefully maybe incorporate some of that into our BOPs if the time comes, but just kind of a good kind of mental preparation. So it was a good event.
Nice. I'm sure that'll help us with our January meeting.
Yeah.
Thank you. Other trustees.
Uh, yes, Superintendent Hood. I wanted to take a moment to thank the high school students that met with me in regards to the superintendent chat. I met with them last Wednesday, I think, and talked about the perception surveys that we're giving. And the high school students were incredibly insightful and wanted to help make sure students took that seriously. And they actually ended up going, recording a video to encourage kids to be honest on it and went to Chippewa to go classroom to classroom to kind of drum up support for the why behind it. So just impressed with our high school students again, taking it to the next level.
Nice. And I heard some initial reports on response rates were pretty good.
Yeah, fantastic response rates. I think we're over eighty, eighty percent of students fourth through twelfth grade have completed the fall survey.
Nice. Other trustees. I don't want to steal any thunder, but I will just mention the crunch, the hunger effort that's going on at the high school now. Our Ms. Biskovich shared with us some news reports of that, and I wasn't sure Finn was going to be here tonight, but it was great to see. I was brought some cans over to the high school on Sunday and all the students there with great enthusiasm. And I don't know the numbers yet. I guess we'll maybe we'll hear that, but just really want to applaud all the efforts to help those in need. So, thank you. Sufficient wait time. Okay, we will move on to a presentation with an Edgewood update. Superintendent Hood.
So as pro- as promised, we will writing quarter the updates in regards to our community ed programming. So Christine is here this evening to kind of re-present the presentation that we presented to families a week, was it a week ago?
Yes.
A week ago on Monday, we offered the opportunity for Edgewood families to come for an update. And while we only had one family there, it was Christine is also sharing it out with with her families in the newsletter. So our year, this will capture August, September, and October. So kind of the first three months of how is community ed doing towards that path to sustainability? So what do we mean when we say the path to sustainability? We mean a break even or make a profit. So it's not going to cost a general fund any dollars. And as you'll recall, last year, I think we had a $300,000 deficit or something we were trying to close. So Director Coordinator Algeri, I say it wrong, Allegary.
Allegary.
Thank you. Allegary got it right. My recorrection is going to provide you an update tonight on that. So let me present, get that presentation going here. Okay.
All right. So as Mr. Hood had said, our goal tonight is to show and share an enrollment update program celebrations, financial update, and answer any questions you might have tonight. Just kind of an update, our goal for our responsibility to work on this deficit is that our Edgewood tuition classrooms would maintain a 75% capacity. And then we were going to try to maintain our BNA, hopefully increase it, but our goal would be to minimally maintain it. So I want to go over our past numbers from July and August. As you can see, it's the end of the fiscal year, beginning of when we transition our classrooms and all of our classrooms maintain that 75% until summer and then our three-year-old and four-year-old tuition summer programs, they were down. And we believe this was because it's the first year that our children did not have to pay to stay to do our four-year-old program. So we did see a decline in our three-year-old classroom as they were able to take the summer off and return to their four-year-old program without worrying about their spot. As you can see, the ratios for infants and toddlers, capacity of 12, one to four ratio, our three-year-old classroom is one to 20 capacity, a one to 10 ratio. And our four-year-old classrooms are a 20 capacity and a one to 10 ratio as well. Our before and after for our four-year-old program is a one to 12 ratio because we do run licensing for that. And at the end of last year, we did decide to do away with our three-year-old before and after care program that was combined. And we transitioned our three-year-old classroom back to that seven, 15 to six time slot. Our BNA numbers for the end of the school year, on average, we had 20 to, you know, 33 children in the morning and at the highest 50 in the afternoon. These are a general number because with the financial system that we had before, we were able to go through and do a range versus a real precise how many is enrolled, how many are drop-ins. So we had to kind of take a median for that. The capacity for our BNA programs depends on the location, but it is a one to 18 ratio. And then we want to look at our current enrollments right now. So our infant room is our one room that's always gonna kind of ebb and flow as a lot of those children aren't born yet or are just born and they, their parents are on their their, their ability to stay home with their kiddos. And some of our parents do it back to back at home. So they don't start sometimes until they're six months old. So as you can see, we already have 12 enrolled for the school year. Although right now we only have eight of those 12 enrolled, we do have tentative start dates for the other four, but for that reason, they're not maintaining that 75%. But by June, they will be at that 12. And then for next August, when we do that transition, we're already at eight starting. So we're in a better spot than what we were in the fall this year. Our toddler and our three-year-old program are maintaining above that 75% and we're continuing to do enrollment tours. And then our BNA, we have 17 with a capacity of 20 in the morning and 26 with the aftercare with a capacity of 30. So we are maintaining that 75%. Bennett Woods and Central Cornell Hiwatha Kinnawar, all of our current locations. As you can see, before care is 16 to 34 in the average of morning and 33 to 53 in the afternoon. That is a slight decline from what we had last year. But in the next slide, we're going to kind of discuss why we have seen a slight decline and we're not where we had our target to be at this point. So some of the challenges that we had in the beginning of the school year is we had to hold our enrollment really tight in the beginning of the year because we had many staff who chose not to return very last minute. So we had to operate in our staffing capacities and we had to put enrollment freeze on our programs in order to maintain our ratios. And we did not have a before care and after care director at Bennett Woods. Although we started our hiring process midsummer, it took us many months to find a highly qualified person to actually fit in that spot and then to train them. So we're happy to say that we have all of our programs open and are taking on full capacity. We have hired Ms. Tracy at Bennett Woods and she is enjoying the building and learning all the children and the staff. And we are fully staffed in our BNA program. So we're excited about that. And we're hoping because of that, we can get those numbers up. For Edgewood, we kind of wanted to share some of our parent engagement goals. Last year, our building goal was a hard, higher parent engagement, and we wanted to continue that this year. So some of the things we've done or are in the process of doing is we've had a call versus night. We've had a hot bottle drive. We're in the process of doing three engagement activities with each of the classrooms with their parents. After each of those activities, we do a survey to give parent insight for what they want to do next and how our activities of what and how we can do better. We're working to create a Wolf Pack gear, but for like wolf pups, just because we're the youngest building and we're hoping to have gear that reflects that. And we're working on having a family photography night to get all of our families in and to get those portraits because it's really hard to find, one, a photographer, two, the night, and three, someone who gets excited about doing family pictures. So we're really excited to kind of work on those pieces for this year. And then highlights, all of our buildings, our licenses are in good standing. I know last time I presented, we weren't there yet. We are there now. We're also in the process of updating our application to raise our star rating. As you know, it was lower due to the provision, but hopefully, once the application goes through, we will be back to that higher rating, which will be all what we want. And that will help support our families who take DHS support because that increases the amount that DHS supports and they don't have to pay. We're also expanding our universal preschool. So we're looking at two more classrooms that we were offered slots for, which is really exciting to us because we know we have a community need of children who need that foundation and we can be that bridge to help get them to kindergarten. And then we also welcomed Lulu, our facility dog to Edgewood. She has been a wonderful addition. And all of the staff and the families just love having her. So she's still in training, but she's been a wonderful addition. For our financial update, as I stated, we did go with a different financial system to help track our revenue and our enrollments. And then we've been working with the district finance to put different systems and better systems in place so that we can keep track of where we are. And with our goal to maintain our 75% and with the tuition increases, we are finding that we are on track for sustainability. But we'll keep you up to date with the next February, March update. What questions do you guys have?
Thank you very much for the presentation. Questions from trustees. Trustee Sresta.
Thank you for the update. I just have one question. So when the families register for the program, do they tell you this is our tentative start date?
Are you?
For the infant room.
So a lot of our registrations come in when the families are pregnant and we have a tentative due date with expected link that they will be home. Some of our children come in as early as six weeks, others come in more at three or six months, depending on how long the family's off with the kiddos. But yes, we have tentative dates. With our capacity of only 12, though, we can only register so many children per year.
I didn't see any other questions, trustee Kavanaugh.
Thank you. Mine, I think it's kind of close and lenient too, though. To for families to hold the spot, do they have to do a down payment or anything? I'm just curious of, you know, because it's 75% or whatever it was.
They, they do pay to have their enrollment. They have an enrollment registration fee, which holds their spot.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just to clarify, so that's a one-time payment to enroll, but not any ongoing payment. So if I enroll, I'll pay that fee. But then I might have a spot held for three months, four months. I mean, is it open-ended or is there some?
So we have a tentative date with registration when it comes in. We all know families might put down payments or registrations in at multiple sites. That's somewhat out of our control. But we do keep in track with the family. When we know the due date's coming up, we reach out to them, just making sure, you know, this is your tentative start date. These are the items you're going to need. We want you to meet with the classroom lead teacher to get to know the team a little bit better. So we try to have those steps of engagement to keep them on track with us. But there are times that they do pull last minute and we have to go back to the drawing board, but they did, they did have that enrollment and a lot of our families, even if they start in, let's say, May, they are then that guaranteed enrollment for the next year because they will not transition with the rest of the classroom who is age eligible to go to the next classroom. So it is, it's kind of looking at it for the future. They're guaranteed spot for that next year.
Trustee Doxy.
Do you have a percentage of how many families paid their registration fee to hold a spot, but actually withdrew at the, like, right when it was time for them to actually start?
I do not have that information. That's not anything we track. I would say that we find that that's not the case. It does happen, but it's not the masses.
And what's the longest period that you can hold a spot again?
I mean, we have families who come in who are actively trying and then they have other children in our building. So they want to know how much time they have. As soon as they know that they're pregnant, they come in, we usually know sometimes before they share with any of their families. But in that sense, we're holding it for over nine months because that baby needs to be born and then they also need their maternity leave at, at home.
And last question. Do you still have wait lists?
We don't have wait lists. We're actively working on tours and enrollments. We, we did go through our waitlist, offered spots and then and the people who did not respond, they were given a period of time and then they were taken off the waitlist.
Thank you.
And you've been working with our comms team to advertise.
We have, yes. We are working on promoting our BNA program right now as well as upcoming spots for GSRP. And then Nathan went in and did classroom pictures and videos of our classrooms to help promote our building and our spots, the few spots that we do have available.
Trustee Wynn.
So just for clarity, when you say you hold a spot for nine months, it's not really like an open spot in the classroom for nine months because you have people that are like moving up to the next classroom and coming in and out. So although they might be holding a spot, it's not an open spot for nine months. Is that correct?
Correct. They're enrolling for whatever our classrooms are a certain age period. So they're enrolling for that period and then that spot that next year, if they're rolling into the next year. So no, if they don't fall into that August through August date, we're going to fill that spot. We're going to make sure that any available spot that we have, we're going to fill.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Trustee Sresta. Okay, trustee Burns.
So you wrote that programs are currently on track for sustainability. Does that mean like at least budget neutral?
As Mr. Hood said in the beginning, the goal is to break even, hopefully make some money, but at least break it even.
Trustee Sresta.
Um, just one, one ask, like next time when you come back, I, we would, or I would be interested to see data on recruitment efforts to like how you're working with comms department and how else the recruitment is going because again, sustainability is part of, it's a big part of this. And going along with that sustainability, how I'm really concerned with, I know this question has been asked in different ways, but when I see four children still not in the classroom, so that means they're not paying tuition while the slots are open in the classroom and how it might affect sustainability of the program.
I will say this program, the infant program in itself is the only program that operates this way. And there could be years where we have a full house the whole year. But because of the nature of the age, there's always going to be that ebb and flow. Would you like recruiting opportunities for staff for hiring and children? Or are you looking more just for the children enrollment?
Just children, but that would be great too, because we also know we need it to be. But that might be true.
Now we broaden it to other trustees, just in terms of the presentation. Is that something that trustees would like added in terms of recruiting efforts for students? The big push for recruiting students is really going to be BNA because that's where we can't, we have the most capacity to add kids. As you saw in the others, like where we're like one or two kids off in a couple of classrooms, and then we hit our maximum. So.
Yeah, ratios and capacities are a lot tighter at Edgewood, just because of the nature of those programs. And as I, as I said, we are working on trying to enroll more children at our BNA programs. And one of the parts on the presentation, we were able to add on the additional drop-in children as a piece of data that we weren't previously able to do. So those drop-in children are in addition to the normal children who attend every day. And they have more of those flex calendars or like those last minute 24 hours in advance type of need.
I really appreciate the school by school kind of breakdown of the before and after care. That's really helpful. And one thing would just be helpful is how many of those are unique families or kids, you know, if that's possible. So some of those probably go to both before and after care. I'm assuming, but I, because I was struck by the, you know, and look at our elementary schools, it's a pretty healthy percent. Again, depending on how many, whether they're all different or all the same kids who use both before and after care, but it's, you know, there's a lot of kids at each school that are utilizing that, that, that service. So that is helpful. Trustee Phelps.
Yeah, just real quick, a lot of good feedback. I just want to give credit where credits do. I mean, we came from $300,000 in the, in the negative to sustainability, which is a huge, a huge win. Along with, looks like we made a lot of systems improvements in terms of budgeting, in terms of recruitment, et cetera, that have improved the program too. So I think we've come a long way. I mean, we're almost, almost a year from the last time, you know, when this whole process started. So just credit where credits do. Certainly it seems like we're still working on some stuff, but a lot of, a lot of good things happening that I see here. So just, just, that's my, my lens here.
Thank you, trustee Phelps. I had the same thought about, you know, you came on board and it was kind of rocky and the ship was definitely stabilized. So I really want to thank you for all your efforts to, to create a stable ship way forward.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Trustee Wynn.
Yeah, thank you for all the information you provided. I thought everything was really helpful. One thing that I would like to see in the future is just about the four-year-old classrooms you showed just before and after care. And I know that's not necessarily like budget affected since it's through the preschool for all program, but I think it would be helpful just to know, seeing that flow how, how many are in those classrooms.
Absolutely. Currently, all of our classrooms are universal preschool at Edgewood. Our, our full and our blended tuition and four-year-old GSRP OPM is full as well. And it's about 16 that are four and the rest are three over at OPM for that blend.
Thank you. Yeah, I think those are big wins too. So I just love to hear you share, share that as well. So thank you.
Trustee Sresta.
Sorry, just wanted to add another thank you because I see parent engagement. I was really impressed because I know there was a lot of interest when we heard from the community. So thank you so much for that. And also going through the compliance process, it's a collaborative effort. So that means you have a great support in your team and you're supporting your team very, very well. So thank you for everything.
You're welcome. I have a fabulous team and I have a fabulous licensing person who comes in and her, our licensing consultant is amazing. She comes in and she supports. I can call her anytime, anytime I have a licensing question. So it, it takes a village and we're all working together for the same goal.
Okay, thank you so much again. Appreciate you coming out and updating us.
Thank you.
Thank you. If it's okay with the rest of trustees, I'd like to move our high school student reports up. That's okay. Tonight we have Harshita and James back with us. So please take it away.
Hi, I'm James Sharp and I'm one of the student, senior student representatives.
I'm Harshita and me also.
So our topics tonight for you guys are miscellaneous clubs and sports. So first off, I believe it was last week on Monday, I think, OHS had a brief I want to say hold and play situation where it was like we stayed in our classrooms and Dr. Kemsley let us know there was like a little search going on for a situation, but law enforcement came by, but it was. But a law enforcement came by, but it was, um, everything was good. Uh, there was no threat at all and the situation was handled very swiftly and it was, um, really impressive. And then also NHS bottle drive was this weekend. It was Saturday and Sunday. Uh, and people could just come by the high school by the bus circle and drop off their bottles and it raised $2,700. And alongside that, the OHS parent group uh, the OHS parent group raised $2,000 for the crunch the hunger fundraiser too. Um, so that's a big bonus and we are currently crunch hunger is still going on right now. It ends tomorrow, I believe is the last day. Um, so, so we don't have any totals yet because the last day is tomorrow, but, uh, it's going really well. And if you bring in, um, food, you get like entered into a raffle. And so at the end of each day, they, the next morning, they announced the winner of the raffle and it's like, there's prizes and everything. So that's been going well. And then upcoming, we had the Thanksgiving break, which starts, uh, Wednesday and that goes until Friday, uh, 26th to 28th. Uh, and senior pictures were also all done. They were all submitted and they're being put into the yearbook already. Uh, we got to see the proofs to confirm that everything was looking good and to the, those are done. And then also, um, there's a class at OHS called nonfiction, which is offered by Miss Free. And there's three different hours and every year she hosts, um, or every semester she hosts the, this kickball game, which is like a charity kickball game. And the goal is to raise money for this charity called Santa's First Responders. And so leading up to the game, uh, there's a bunch of different things. You, your class, the class's goal is to raise as much money possible. And so, uh, this past Tuesday, I believe, we hosted a Culvers fundraiser where we had, uh, members of our class uh, sign up to volunteer at Culvers and we got a cut of the money from Culvers and we raised $420 that night. So that all goes to Santa's first responders.
Um, also for Santa's first responders, Action had a bake sale and we raised $1,600 that day within the three lunches and there was almost over like a hundred desserts and snacks that were there. So our students did pretty well. FYF, which is fa- fa- financial youth foundation, went to Cornell Elementary School to teach little kids about finance and budgeting and that went pretty well. We have for Action again, um, their merch sale for Santa's First Responders, that's been going on. Basically just like multiple fundraisers to try to gain awareness and to raise more money. Quiz Bowl, which is a club at our school, participated at MSU for regionals and got fifth. Spanish and French Honor Society had their potluck social event on November 14th and food was brought in and it was really fun. Um, lastly, women's and leadership and legacy are adopting a family for Christmas. And this is when, um, we get a family and they're like, and they're like wish lists and we with the money that we have in donation from the club and like fundraisers and stuff, we buy the stuff on the list and wrap them and then give them to them. So yeah, that's it for us today. Do you guys have any questions for us?
Uh, trustee Daxi.
No question, but thank you for the update and I love hearing about what is financial, what's FYF again?
Oh, financially.
Just, I appreciate hearing the high schoolers going and teaching our younger students about financial literacy. Thank you.
I went to the high school after announcing I was retiring and the sentiment seemed to be from students, call as many snow days as possible. Do you share that sentiment or?
Yes.
You don't need to answer that.
Um, I don't know where, uh, so you, uh, James, you mentioned the, uh, the, uh, drawing the lottery for people who brought in food. And so my daughter was really excited to get the $5 off a Jersey Mike's sandwich. I don't know where those, um, you know, businesses that have donated items, uh, you know, get recognized, but, um, it'd be something that I'd be curious to learn about if you, when you come back next. I think Douglas J was also mentioned as another donor.
I don't know too much about that, but I can, yeah. Doctor Kemsley, I think knows more about it. But yeah, I can try and find some more about that until you guys next week or Tuesday now.
That would be great. Yeah. And again, leadership at many levels, right? From, you know, administration to organize and teachers to organize kickball games and for students to actually go out and sort cans and bottles and all that stuff. So. Thank you. Um, other questions, comments, any, any questions for us?
I don't think so.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Uh, you're free to stay or go. Thank you, guys. Have a good break. Okay, next up we have a discussion move forward regarding long-range planning partners, Superintendent Hood.
Yeah, thank you, President Buffett and trustees. I'm going to present from my seat here, if I may. Thank you, Mr. Brown. So, uh, let's see, let me get rid of this bar if I can here. Okay, page down. Okay, so a goal tonight is to seek, I have a discussion and hopefully get some direction on our pre-bond long-term planning and who those partners might be with our pre-bond. I want to be clear tonight, um, and thank you for feedback trustees. Tonight, we're not, we don't have to make a commitment past pre-bond planning. However, some of our partners have made commitments should we wish to continue with them afterwards. But we can separate the pre-bond decision to after the bond passes, you can always, um, you know, pay out the partners for that work and then uh, should you, should, you know, new superintendent, new board at that point wish to go in a different direction, you can certainly bid those out. And none of this would preclude that from happening. Okay, so I don't think that was clear in my first rendition of the, of the, um, PowerPoint. So thank you for your feedback on that. Um, tonight I want to talk a little bit about what we might be planning for. Um, some of the opportunities that we have to finance it and we'll talk about that after the start of the year about what, what are those plans and and when? I'll review our current partnerships, uh, what I made with considerations, pros and cons into recommending a path forward for, uh, pre-bond, uh, long-term, long-term planning work. And then a recommendation and next steps from, from me for trustees to consider for action at the next board meeting. Oops. Now, sorry, there we go. So some of our, uh, big rocks that we've identified that we're going to have to, um, come up with some ideas to fund in the future would be, uh, the replacement of Central Elementary School. Uh, where our OPM, uh, at Montessori is. So when I say central Montessori, I'm trying to name the building and the program OPM uh, at Central. Uh, and from the boards, uh, presentations about the Montessori, you know, my recommendation for that was to look at, um, a new elementary that maybe has a little bigger size, so we can expand that 3K for programming. Another big rock for us to, uh, overcome or address is student device replacement. As you'll recall, our student device replacement was removed from the 2022 bond, uh, the second replacement. So those devices will expire 27-ish, 27, 28. Uh, and the district, uh, needs a plan for replacing our one-to-one devices. Uh, we do have a contingency plan in place, but we'd like to free up those dollars, um, for sinking fund if possible, so. And then, uh, reuse of Kinnawa, um, we're talking about some plans for potential reuse of that site. Um, which could mean some significant dollars. So that's, you know, a few of the big rocks. There are medium and small rocks that we need to. Um, more facility pressing needs as we review our facility, facilities assessments, more athletics, buses, et cetera. Um, and all that will be identified in the process that we run, um, when we decide what, what's on our next list of needs. Uh, but those big rocks, um, you know, student device replacement will be over $5 million. Uh, you know, a new building is in the, you know, 40-ish, 40 or more million dollar ranges are things that our general fund or sinking fund can't really provide for. So how do you finance those things? There's really two ways to finance them is one is a voter-approved bond and a voter-approved sinking fund. Now the sinking fund won't generate the dollars to, to, to replace a building or to, to build a, a building. Uh, but a potential bond in the future could. Um, and just so you know, our current sinking fund, uh, was renewed in 2020, 21. So it'll, uh, expire in 2030, 31, uh, which means that would have to be renewed by our voters. And that generates what? A little over a million dollars a year? 1.1 million was? 1.7 million. There we go. Thank you. 1.7 million dollars a year for that. Our current partners, we have, uh, Veritas, Chrisman and Tower Pinkster. Verinus, Veritas is our owner's rep. Uh, Chrisman is our construction manager and Tower Pinkster is our architect. Uh, those are our current partners. So when looking at, um, successful fact, factors for future planning for that pre-bond work, um, I boil it down to really three main points and I'm going to share with you more than threes, make these three main points. But I wanted you to consider these as number one is some continuity, knowing leadership is going to be undergoing, uh, transition with a new superintendent coming on. Two is being, you know, good stewards of the finances for the district and making sure we're getting a good deal. Uh, whoever we choose to be our partners moving forward. And then three, and these are not in a particular order, by the way, um, is quality. You want to make sure it's quality work. We're delivering the work on time with high quality outcomes. So those kind of three factors I want trustees pleased to keep in mind as I go through a list of different more exhaustive pros and cons. So you're going to see one slide. Hey, if you're going to extend the agreement, John, what would you want to consider if you're going to do a new agreement with new partners? What would you want to consider? And again, this is for our, kind of our pre-bond work. So with our current partners, um, they know our sites. Um, and that helps with some continuity, continuity and is, is a huge efficiency. They know our sites. They've done our, our building assessments and renew them easily and that minimizes time spent, which are, you know, billable hours and minimizes that learning curve. Secondly, uh, we have a very successful team, uh, the team with the three partners is very cohesive. They're delivering on time. Uh, they've really become part of, an extended part of our staff, uh, communicate with us well. And, um, that in itself, um, because those systems already there could, could potentially reduce delays or conflicts with, with new partners. Uh, the stability during leadership transitions, um, is, uh, the, the teams know our guiding principles, know our plan for how we're making decisions and prioritizing and that helps support consistent decision-making and project momentum as we move forward. Um, with, with, um, new bond work. What I mean by that is like our current approach is let's get the big rocks done first and see what, what else falls out, but then let's try to prioritize, um, student classroom inward out where we can. Um, and then find, um, some additional needs that might be critical to meet, um, and see where the the bond ends up and we'd want to kind of continue with that philosophy. Um, we, I have negotiated competitive rates and, um, done an independent, uh, comparison of how do those rates, um, fall, uh, with other industry standards in Mid Michigan. And I can tell you the rates that our current partners have offered us are, uh, very competitive. Uh, as good as we had in 2022 and sometimes, um, an improvement on rates um, that may be happening around the county and other areas. And that's because of our, um, current relationship, the amount of money in our bonds and in our future bonds that partners look at that and consider it going, hey, you know, you had a $275 million bond and you got another big bond coming up. That's a good business for them to keep, uh, a competitive rate with us to, um, keep that relationship going for them. Um, coordinating with one team, right now we meet multiple times with, uh, our bond partners during the week. And, uh, if we extended the agreements, we, you know, continue the 2022 work with that same team and start on future work with that team. Otherwise, we have a whole different set of three partners to meet with in addition to the current team. So remember the current bond work goes on through 2031. Um, and that would be, uh, a, a lot to manage, uh, with, you know, six partners instead of three partners potentially, up to six. Uh, in addition, they're also managing our subcontractors on our sites. And you can imagine just an extra layer of planning that would be needed if now you have, um, three more partners trying to manage the use of sites and timelines and have meetings with administrators. That unified coordination of contractors and timelines amongst fewer partners is an efficiency for us. And then that track record we have with a team of delivering quality outcomes aligned with our goals. Um, we've been on time and within budget or under budget currently. So really proud of that with, uh, with the current team. So those are things I considered in the recommendation if I was going to uh, extend the agreement for pre-bond work. So if I was going to bring on a new partner, what, what you want me to think about? Um, a new partner could bring us a fresh perspective and some updated best practices. So it's always, there's always an opportunity for, hey, there maybe there's a different or better way to do things. Um, although, um, they wouldn't have onsite familiarity, so we'd have that learning curve that we talked about. So they would remove some continuity and we'd have to spend, um, some, some significant time with them, bringing them up to date on our, our sites and our needs. Uh, that new team development provides opportunities, um, as well. Um, not just new perspectives, but new opportunities for working together, but that's going to require additional time. It would be an additional transition during time of a leadership change. You know, you're bringing on a new superintendent uh, and potentially up to three more partners with a new superintendent. So that's something to consider in terms of just a lot of managing change and moving pieces, uh, for the district. Certainly with new partners, you could renegotiate terms and work to optimize costs. We talked about the crossover of the bond teams and contractors through 2031. Again, none of these are, um, not overcomeable. It's just the amount of capital and additional coordination would take for some new partners. Uh, and we have established district standards, um, that, um, we have across the district to help make sure we have some efficiencies in terms of doors and hardware and cameras and um, and we'd have to make sure that just all that institutional knowledge that we have with our current partners is transferred again to the new partners as well. So our partner contracts, I'm going to pull out the financial piece here. Um, we've negotiated with our partners for the pre-bond work to include no fees paid during pre-bond, uh, planning. So it means there's going to be no cost to the general fund for, for any of this pre-bond planning work. And again, past beyond pre-bond planning, we could choose to keep these folks or we could choose to bid out for new. Uh, the industry standard for Veritas and our owner's rep for future commitments is, is two to 4%. They've given us a range of two to 3%. And you may ask, John, why is that not 2.25 or 2.5? For owner's rep and for the construction, um, manager, they need to know the scope of the work before they can finalize the, um, the, uh, their, their cost estimate. So, um, it's dependent on the final scope and especially with the construction manager, it's also dependent upon how we negotiate who's managing the risk of the subcontractors. Our current, uh, approach with Chrisman has been that they manage all the subcontractors and the risk with the subcontractor. Should a subcontractor default, that's on them. A, a cheaper way to do it could be for a district to, to do that, but we didn't, um, think that cost savings was worth it. So those two finalized fees would be, need to be, um, negotiated later. Chrisman's current CM fee is about 2.92% with our, our current bond work. Um, and again, it'll be dependent on, on the final scope for both of those. And then Tower really matched the rates from 2022, so they, um, are charged, the industry's, oops, charging a standard rate of six to 10%. Uh, we were at 6% with them, uh, in 2022 and that remained the same as their future commitment. So they didn't up their price to us at all, um, from 2022 to percent, to potentially 2027 or 2028, which is a, which is a win for us. In terms of how much would pre-bond work potentially cost from folks, like how much does that add up to be? Because there's some efficiencies built in to former partners, knowing us, knowing our community, knowing, uh, facilities assessment. It's going to be cheaper actually to go with them for pre-bond work than it is for a, a new partner. Uh, because we've already developed the systems, they've already done, uh, a lot of the work and developed the relationship. They know the Oakhurst community. They have the cadence with the board, whereas with new partners, we'd have to recreate, recreate that, which takes time, time is money. So, um, I do have here, if I can get to my page without closing my okay, that worked, I think. One second, I gotta pull up something. I have some numbers to share with you, uh, my yellow sheets. There we go, which I don't want to. So let me just say this, so, um, okay, so let me see. So we think the total cost for, um, Chrisman, Chrisman anticipated their cost for pre-bond work to be fairly minimal because they already have people here, uh, that are working with us. Uh, they might have to add one employee to help us with that work. So they thought pre-bond work would be in the $10,000 range total. Um, if we brought in a comparable, um, company that didn't have people already assigned here would be between 40 and $60,000. So we've gained about $50,000 per efficiency of current work that's going on. For Veritas, we think the pre-bond work fees would be somewhere in the 50 to $80,000 range total for the, for the pre-bond work with them. All right. Go back to my. I can find it. There we go. Thank you. So there we go. So my recommendation is for the pre-bond work to continue with our current partnerships. And really for four reasons is they've proven to be good partners and have great performance for us. They have the institutional knowledge that gains us efficiencies. They're immediately ready and can seamlessly kind of move on. And, and looking at industry rates, they, they've kept the rates they had prior or reduced them in terms of pre-bond work because we have some established efficiencies already. So to me, it, it, it makes a lot of sense with a, with a transition coming up that we continue with them pre-bond. Again, when a new superintendent comes in and once the bond work is done, there's an opportunity for an RFP and bidding out, do you want to keep these current partners? Yes or no? And then the scope is decided. So you have a much better idea of what an RFP might look like. If I was to do an RFP right now for an owner's rep or a construction manager, they're going to provide us again, something very generic because they don't know what the scope is. And it's really a lot of that is dependent on scope. And those are the partners that I'm suggesting could be our future partners for the pre-bond work. Our next steps would be action on that at December, in December. And either the board takes action and says, yep, you can do the pre-bond work with them, knowing it's not going to come out of the general fund. And we'll pay it out of the future bond proceeds. Or John, we're not comfortable with that. We want you to do a generic RFP on, on pre-bond work and come back to us to, to show that you've gotten good rates for us.
Thank you for the overview and the different considerations. Questions from trustees. Trustee Burns and then trustee Phelps.
I guess a couple of questions and I'll, we'll obviously trade off. You said here in kind of the rocks discussion.
Yes.
I'm just going back to our previous bond. That was a I mean, there was a very large committee and we all kind of threw it, you know, ideas back and forth in terms of that. Do you anticipate that happening again? It seems like we have some ideas for big rocks. I assume that's not set in stone. That's something that a, a larger group would review.
Rocks, not set in stone. I like the pun.
Yeah, unintentional. Good catch.
So certainly we'd come up with the process for community input again. And we'd refresh the facilities assessment and figure out what are the big, you know, what are the big, medium and small rocks? I think that could be expedited with current partners because they know kind of the things we've already addressed and the things that aren't addressed in our upcoming. But that process would occur. I think it could be expedited though.
Yeah, no. And I, and I can appreciate that. It's, I'm not suggesting we start from scratch necessarily. Certainly, you know, like central's building, but there was some, I mean, I'm just looking at this. There were some, you know, for, I'm not suggesting this necessarily, but there was talk of an auditorium in the previous spot. I mean, like, I just want to make sure we're inclusive to all those ideas as they kind of come up. And I have some others, but I'll let the next person go.
Trustee Burns.
So the rates that you showed is that like, if we went the route of having an RFP, was that essentially what they would? Like that's already, that's essentially what they would submit for that. I guess what comes to mind for me is there's lots of folks that would, within the community would probably just want to, a little bit more information about like, making sure that we're being good stewards of, of their money. And then RP would be one way to demonstrate that, but I don't know if that, that sets us up to, they turn around and like, well, now we're going to give you a higher, we're not going to give you the same discount or something like that.
Yeah. So certainly that could be, the issue is the efficiencies that we have with current partners aren't necessarily going to be reflected. Like it could be a cheaper rate, but not necessarily end up being overall the, the better use of our time because of all of the other contingencies that I shared with you. So finances is one piece of that to consider. I don't know whether we'd get, you know, what, I can't speculate on what the rates would be if, if we, you know, if we had everybody resubmit, but I can tell you, I did, that we did research local districts and these rates are in line with, or in some cases, under what local districts have for current bond projects.
Other trustee win.
So were these selected in 2022? And at that time, was there like a bid that went out and they were selected based on the bid and all factors at the time?
Yes, we did the architect and construction manager first. And then we did the, actually the owners rep last, and that actually should have come first. We kind of learned that process as we, as we did it. So we actually brought our owners rep on at the end, when we probably should have brought them on at the beginning. And they actually helped us when we brought them on renegotiate our contracts, which saved us money.
And how does it compare to the cost of pre-bond work that we did before?
It's less than before.
Went back to trustee Phelps. That's out of the table. Trustee Phelps.
Um, yeah. One point of clarification, I think the community would, I guess, I think I know the answer to this, but just want to confirm. Part of the scope of anything we do, whether it's a sinking fund or a bond, might include things like buses or student devices. Tower Pinkster is not doing architect work on student devices and buses. So we wouldn't be paying a fee to Tower Pinkster for those items. Just clarify for the community so they.
Yeah, thank you. Great point. So no, the, the projects that we, we manage some of the projects within the bonds, we don't pay the overhead for, for those, because there's no design, no oversight, like, like transportation. We handle that. We've handled most of the student devices where some of the technology may overlap. If it's, it's part technology that's designed in a new build, a new build. But no, we save money and gain efficiencies by managing those parts our own.
Thank you. And that was my understanding as well. I just wanted to confirm if the community understood.
Other trustee win.
Okay. So I understand that we don't have to pay until a bond is passed, but if a bond fails, then we have to pay them. Yes.
Uh, they will continue to work with us until the bond passes.
Okay.
Great question.
Trustee Phelps.
Just one final, just one of the things you mentioned here was sinking fund, which I, I looked forward to that discussion because I think that's an intriguing piece that we could look at, especially with the legislature expanding the uses for. My understanding is right now we're levying approximately one mil of sinking fund. And just to confirm, I believe districts can levy up to three mils. Okay. And we're doing one mil is 1.7 million about is, okay.
Yeah. So there, you know, there, there's potential for both and hands in these conversations too, and getting creative. So yeah, there, there are potentially sinking fund dollars out there that we're not levying, like there's room per se.
All part of the discussion when we're looking at a long range of planning. Yeah. Wonderful. Thank you.
Trustee, trust them.
Excuse me. So let's say we go the route of RFP. What does that timeframe look like?
So if you wanted me to do an RFP on, on pre-bond partners, I probably would not be able to get that done until sometime, I would say January, late January. And then we could come back to you and bring you those numbers in early February, hopefully. RFP is different than an RFP in an interview. So if you want me to interview and bring forth a recommendation, that's different than just an RFP. An RFP could be just to get some numbers to say, hey, these numbers make sense. They don't make sense. What you're going to see is a lot of partners are going to roll those into the bond because they're going to want to be the long-term partners. So similar approach in terms of you're not going to pay upfront. My, and I'm happy to do that. My, I want to say struggle. My, I wonder with that is at what point would the rate be low enough to to trade off the pros and cons for the continuity, the change in leadership, the managing two teams? That to me is significant in terms of not just, I mean, not just finances, but the day-to-day work, if that makes sense. So you could get someone that comes in at a half percent less, but I may not recommend to go with them because gosh, for half percent less, I'm not going to manage more, more partnerships, you know, that type of thing. So happy to do either. Again, I do think we have a very fair shake at the pre-bond work with no former, with no commitment beyond that. For a new superintendent to decide when they get to that point, do we want to continue or not and get, get new rates at that time? For the pre-bond work, I don't know that the juice is worth the squeeze, but certainly will defer to the will of the board.
And we will see this again on December 8th as an action item.
Yes.
Any other questions before we move on? Okay. Superintendent, could you bring up the, the discussion regarding the superintendent search firm?
Again.
Great. So as Superintendent brings that up, the personnel committee has met a few times since we were last here on the table. We solicited proposals from three different, three different companies. M A S B, the Michigan Leadership Institute and Ray and Associates. As you know, we, we shared the criteria that we would use to, we go to the next slide, actually. The criteria we use to, that we do, we would use to evaluate the different proposals with, with trustees and also the, the three companies that we plan to solicit proposals from. We didn't get any additional kind of input on that front. So we just kind of ran with those. And the criteria are up there unchanged since you last saw them. And there's the three companies that we received, we solicited and received proposals from. Yes.
Just one point of clarification. Just we reached out to Jason Melama and other, you know, I think Trune, we talked, I mean, we kind of cast a wide net to figure out if there, if there are other firms that we should be getting quotes from. And these were really the only three that everyone said are doing 99% of the work in Michigan. There are some others potentially, a lot of those are just, either they don't specialize in superintendent searches, they do other things. Or they are nationally based, like they're more focused on, you know, national searches, not specific to Michigan and they're not in Michigan. So just kind of some, some context, I guess, maybe that I would add.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Yes. All right. And I also got some unsolicited, reaching out from people to as soon as you do superintendent search, it's amazing what kind of comes up. So yes, th- these are the three that we actually got proposals from. And then we, we ruled out and all the proposals are up on board books. I don't know if you have a chance to review them, but we ruled out Ray and Associates because of the cost. It wasn't clear what we would be getting from them. That was really different. They're a national organization, I think, based in Iowa. Anyway, but their cost was, yeah, it's like at least two and a half times as much as the other one. So we didn't, we did not interview them. We did check the references for and interview the two M A S B and the Michigan, MLI. And there's a lot of commonalities. These are not like, you know, radically different in their approach. And some of the commonalities are posted there, but again, they really do work with boards from the very beginning, the process, the very end. They work with boards to develop a profile for the job posting. They both, again, I don't know what percent of the superintendent searches they, they do in Michigan, but they're, they're, they're the main. Over, yeah, they do most of them. They both have different ways to engage stakeholders, both surveys and focus groups. They also provide some support for thinking about a compensation package for a new superintendent. They both provide workshop with the board and the new superintendent after the hire is done. And they also both provide a guarantee. So that, those are the same for both. We, after talking with, again, both, both organizations, people from both organizations and their references are recommending the Michigan Leadership Institute. They, the kind of headline of them is that they're, they really seem to be flexible. And we heard that from some, some people, board members that they had worked with in other districts and said that they were very accommodating to again, input on the superintendent profile and kind of ongoing engagement with both the community members and also trustees. We also worked with MLI at our board retreat last summer. And in fact, the person who we, if we select them to do the search for us is the same person that worked with us, Andy Engel. So there's that familiarity. It wasn't clear. Well, there was a suggestion about who the M A S B facilitator might be, but it wasn't a kind of a hard commitment as to who it might be. And then again, their references were just really enthusiastic. That was kind of, kind of stood out when we, when we talked to folks. So that, those were the, what kind of distinguished MLI. I don't know if you have anything to add, trustee Kavanaugh or trustee Phelps to that?
No, I think in the interview, in the interview process too, MLI stood out. The recommendations though, I was really glowing references to board members that I spoke to from different boards were very enthusiastic. I couldn't say enough good things. And I know you both spoke to other ones. So we spoke to lots of boards. I mean, it was a big outreach of references, which was interesting on its own anyway, to talk to other board members.
Yeah. The MLI proposal, we saw it in the proposal, but they actually include like all of the searches they've done since, I think, 2017. So that was many more than in their proposal. Trustee Phelps.
Yeah. I think trustee Kevin, I mean, we spent a lot of time last week. We talked to a lot of districts. And I think MLI and, and Andy's references, Andy Engel is, is, is the facilitator we're, we're talking about here. Really glowing reviews. I mean, just in terms of approach, in terms of working with, in terms of, one thing I really appreciated was we got a lot of feedback, how he really is good about keeping the whole board in the loop with things. It's not a, it's not a siloed thing. It's really making sure the whole board is, feels evolved and valued in this discussion. One thing that stood out to me, just in our interviews, we interviewed both firms for over, you know, about an hour each. And we had actually asked lots of questions. Just with MLI's approach versus M A S B's, M A S B's approach. And listen, a lot of districts use them. I'm not, you know, it just seemed more, this is our approach and districts kind of work around that versus MLIs was kind of like, this is our approach, but we're really flexible and want to do it how you, makes sense for you. You know, President Buffett put Oklahoma is the approach. I really felt that with MLI, not as much with M A S B. And I think our feedback from other districts kind of supported that as well in terms of when we were calling the references. So that was just my, I guess, two cents after that process.
So again, you all have, have the proposals and the intention to see them, but there are questions about our process or about our recommendation? Yes, trustee Doxy.
Uh, no questions, but thank you to the ad hoc committee for the undertaking and reaching out to other districts and and entertaining the non-solicited need back during this process. So thank you.
It's most welcome. Trustee win.
Yes. Thank you guys for doing all of this work. And I just wanted to make a comment, you know, for the public too, that we have worked with M A S B for strategic planning, have worked with MLI for our annual board meetings. That was called.
Retreat.
Retreat. Thank you. So I think that we're in a unique position that at least we have had touch points with both of these providers. So I feel more confident that we at least have a basis of, you know, working with both of those before. So just wanted to add that. But thank you for all the work you've done for checking references and doing the interviews. And I think the references especially, I think, is what's really important to hear, you know, who you really felt good about after references.
Are there questions or comments? Okay. So we will see this later in the agenda. As an action item, but now we'll move on to citizens opportunity to address the, the board. There are some parameters there that are on the agenda. I don't see anyone, any blue sheets here, but anyone on, online, Mr. Brown?
No comments online.
Thank you. Okay. No comments online. So we will now move on to superintendent reports in our class, superintendent hood.
Thanks, President Buffett. Shorter report tonight. First of all, just in the spirit of being thankful, want to extend my gratitude to the Board of Education, the administrative team and all the employees of the Oakhamis Schools for all the work they do to help meet the needs of kids. Very thankful to have worked in the Oakhamis community with amazing kids and a, in a community that values public education and that partnership amongst some of the best in doing that. So very, very thankful. I wanted to thank Dr. Burns and our strategic planning group, especially Shannon and our principals for helping getting out our first round of perceptions. uh and our principals um for helping getting out our first round of perception surveys. So while there's a few bumps along the road, uh so far it's gone very, very well. We have to uh allow students to opt out, so that opt out let- letter went out and I think we had less than fifteen students, like ten students decided to opt out. And then we're required to post uh the survey questions and eventually the results. And oh, that that's that's done. Again, praise to the O H students for helping to promote the survey um to other, to to our students and our parent and staff surveys will open this week, so we're excited about that. Um, I shared with trustees a letter that I sent out to employees who might be nervous about their first time taking this type of survey. And just to be clear publicly uh with the board and to all our employees, that this is uh for employees, it's anonymous. So we're not collecting any information that would track um them back to the individual. It's voluntary, so you don't have to take it as an employee, although we would highly encourage you to do so. So your voice is valued in celebrating our successes and driving improvements forward. And um the data won't be used towards any individual employee's evaluation, any disciplinary matter, any, anything of that nature. What it will be used for is to celebrate the collective successes we have as we look at our survey data, what we want to keep doing. Uh, what it will be used for is looking at some patterns of where we want to grow as a district, what we want to stop doing or start doing, uh, which is a best practice as we teach and learn, providing feedback to our learners uh and to each other, and I think models um what our community would expect as us being public stewards and public educators. So I would encourage our parents to take that survey and share the feedback, uh, both good, bad and indifferent. Um, and I would encourage all our employees to do that, and um uh I would say through our actions, we will build trust with how we use that data. And um, your voice is valued and important, so please consider that. And again, that was sent in a letter to all our employees and just wanted publicly to share that with our trustees, because I expect you to hold me to that as well um as we go through the process. Here, um, thanks to Amanda Patton. This is Amanda's first time uh for doing the board agenda on board book and with the board meeting. So thank you trustees for your patience and for uh helping support Amanda through that process. She's been incredible, um, but let us know if we've missed anything, or we need to make any changes, or you see errors. She's been doing amazingly uh in Rihanna's place, again, part-time, because she's got another, another job with us, but thank you for your grace and support in that process. Um, trustees, just make sure you're aware that we now have P T L events all shared on our district-wide P T O calendar. Uh, and I provided that link for you. Uh, so if you wanted to say, hey, I got nothing to do tonight, and I'd like to engage with the community, you can see where there's events going on um across the district to make that easy for you. Um, so thanks to Shannon and our comms team for getting that, getting that together. I wrote a letter in support of Emmeridian Township's police accreditation if to renew their accreditation, and I wrote a letter on behalf of the district to the Michigan Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission outlining our uh partnership and our outstanding service um from Meridian Township Police Department to the Oakhamis Schools as well. And with that, I think that's all for my uh report for tonight.
Okay, uh, questions for superintendent hood? Um, I would just like to to um, you know, to 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 thank uh the leadership uh and and trustee Burns for for um making these, bringing these surveys to fruition. Um, it was a, an early ask on my tenure on the board, and I'm just excited to see them come, and I would just echo superintendent hood's uh request for participation. Um, at the end of the day, um, this is to help us learn and get better at what we do, and um in that spirit of learning, um, you know, I just hope everyone makes their voice heard, so. Thank you. Okay, not seeing any other questions, we'll move on to board reports and requests. I'll be begin by acknowledging uh receipt of correspondence. Uh, we received a uh a note from Jeffrey Lemay regarding school start times from Diana Bonus Corsi regarding the O P M crosswalks. Melissa Samlock regarding the Oakhamis Carers Holiday Gift Drive and Teresa Rice Olawoff regarding accessible and functional playground equipment. I will say regarding the O P M uh crosswalk that that I just uh was in touch with our liaison at the Emmeridian uh certain police department officer.
Short.
Short, officer short, and he like with like with less than twenty-four hours. Uh, so I just want to thank that that partnership is so important. But other reports, requests. Trustee Sh- Shresta?
Um, last week, last Monday, on the seventeenth, I attended District Parent Council meeting. And I was just, um, I wanted to bring some of the concerns the families had, or parents had expressed there. The decrease of um parent engagement opportunities in elementary school. Because for me, my kids are much older, so I didn't realize it has decreased a lot. So that was one of the concerns um expressed by many families in our different elementary buildings. And the other two concerns were the traffic again, the um during the drop off and pickups and um the facilities, and I think um just the playground, this um, and making sure they're always in good shape, or how do we make sure, because I think in Hayawatha, I don't know whether uh students are able to use the playground anymore or still, because that's like one of the concerns.
To clarify, they can use it. There's a couple pieces that are broken, and the playground equipment is so old that you can't get the replacement parts. So we're addressing that, um, expediting that through the twenty twenty-two bond monies. But that came up at parent council.
Thank you, uh trustee Kavanaugh.
I should have said this in our earlier thing, but we had our safety forum. Just want to thank all the families who came out for that the last Tuesday. Um, and that is available online. It was recorded, and that was just a nice discussion. It was kind of a smaller group, so we were able to have a more of a everybody sitting at the table and having a discussion, and um I look forward to doing that yearly. It's just a nice reminder for families who've been here, but for families who maybe are new, uh, great introduction to our safety and security systems here in the district.
Thank you. Um, uh, we had had a trustee tease, trustees. Yeah, I know, we changed the name. Trustees gathering scheduled for November seventeenth, um, which we had to cancel. Um, I did hear from one person who showed up and I I reached back out to her and apologized, and she understood, but if anyone else showed up at that and didn't see the cancellation, want to extend our apology. The message went out that the uh next date is on December first. Uh, Moken Company at six to seven thirty. Yeah, fantastic. So again, that there should be, I I know uh, Miss Miss Kavitch uh sent out some some uh material on that, so. Um, anything else? Okay, we will move on to action items. Um, within action items, there's a consent agenda to expedite the business of the board, which groups a number of items together to be dealt with by one action of the board. Uh, however, items in the consent agenda may be extracted by individual board members' requests for further discussion or clarification. So first up, we have a consent agenda. Can I have a motion, please?
I moved to the board to prove items one and two for immediate implementation and appropriate action. Item one, approve of the minutes of the regular meeting of November ten, twenty twenty-five. And item two, approval of the minutes of the executive session meeting on November tenth, twenty twenty-five.
Moved by trustee Phelps, supported by trustee when? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let's have it seven oh. Um, next up, we have a uh action item related to an adequate information proceed related to our recommendation from the personnel committee we made earlier.
Board, sorry, I move that the board waive twenty-five oh three A requirements and take action on whether to select a superintendent search form.
Uh, moved by trustee when supported by trustee Shresta. Any, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the odds have it seven oh. Uh, next up, we have the selection of the search for firm uh for superintendent, certain new superintendent. Can I have a motion, please?
Um, yes. I moved that the board, oh, that's not it. Hang on. Thank you. I moved that the board Good thing I have my glasses. Waive the reading of the contract and appoint Michigan Leadership Institute as a search for firm for the superintendent of the Oakhamis Public Schools.
Support.
By trustee Kavanaugh, supported by trustee Phelps. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nice, have it seven oh. Um, next up, we have uh the amended budget for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Have a motion, please.
I moved that the board approved the amended twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget.
Support.
Uh, moved by uh trustee Kavanaugh, supported by trustee Burns. Um, discussion. This does require a roll call vote.
Tom Buffett.
Yes.
Jason Burns.
Yes.
Katie Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Andrew Phelps.
Yes.
Laney Shrether.
Yes.
Jillian Win.
Yes.
And I'm.
Seven oh. Okay, uh, next up, we have an action regarding furniture purchase. Moved by trustee when supported by trustee Phelps. New discussion?
Say that phrasing is weird to me. Open this elementary school.
So normally, um, Rihanna would have wrote this, but I I wrote it, so it's probably, it's probably why it doesn't feel like it. Probably why it doesn't feel like it flows so much from the other one. So this includes all our elementary schools and chip was basically what I wanted to make sure they knew, including Montessori, so.
And just real quick, superintendent, could you just kind of, I know we talked about this last year, but maybe just quick.
Yeah, absolutely. So uh, the presentation from last year was attached for you, um, how we piloted. Uh, and last year, it was last November, um, Assistant Superintendent Bailey presented that as well as a request for funding of the Kenowa Furniture, which uh had a do not exceed of one point nine million, but came in underneath that by quite a few hundred thousand dollars. Uh, this is continuing that bond purchase for the new Chippewa and Oakus Elementary, Oakhamis Elementary Schools, which we need to hit the summer. This work's going to happen all this summer, as our new building opens and all our new elementaries, all our elementaries will have new furniture for next school year. So this um is an additional five point five nine million dollars out of that portion of the bond. And the memo, I think, says the total furniture budget was like nine point one million. So uh, we're coming in under that so far, with with still more furniture projects to go potentially in the future, so.
Very exciting. And one thing I just wanted to make sure that the community is aware of in this one, if you confirm. I know, for example, in our elementary schools, we've recently refreshed the library furniture. We're not getting rid of that as part of this. This is new furniture.
In addition to the twenty nineteen furniture.
That we've already done.
Yes.
Thank you.
Interesting win.
And I was just gonna say, I read like in the presentation, also, there's like furniture that's coming over like to the new Chippewa from old Chippewa, that was newer furniture that also we're still using. Um, and then just a side comment that uh, one of the test classrooms is a classroom that my, one of my kids is in, and during um uh parent teacher conferences, it was just over Zoom or whatever, but they um showed the classroom to us and kind of pointed out different areas of the furniture and how it's being used by students. So that was really cool. So um, it seems like the the teachers and the students are really liking it.
Thanks for that. And then in addition, Assistant Superintendent Bailey is working on professional development with the teachers. How do you utilize that? Uh, and then learning space to promote learning.
Fantastic. Okay, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Just trustee Doxy, you're looking at me.
Yes, because it's required.
Does, okay, so because of the.
That's my fault.
Thank you, trustee Doxy. You have very uh communicative expressions.
Tom Buffett.
Uh, yes.
Jason Burns.
Yes.
Katie Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Andrew Phelps.
Yes.
Laney Shrether. Jillian Win.
Yes.
And I'm.
Yes.
Uh, it's seven oh. Okay, next up, we have uh power school litigation. Can I have a motion, please?
The board gave the reading of the power school data breach litigation resolution and authorized superintendent hood to join the nationwide lawsuit on behalf of the district.
Support.
Moved by trustee Kavanaugh, supported by trustee Burns. Um, discussion. I I I do have one, one uh kind of question in terms of proceeds. Like I know, like when we, we had the vapor uh settlement, we put in vape detectors, that made it. So what what would be the, do we have a vision for what we'd use this proceeds for?
Uh, we we have not identified that yet. However, our past practice has been is to try to find something that matches the let's say the natural consequence measure of the scope. So with vaping, we use, we did vape detectors. I can imagine with the power school data breach, uh, we could do a couple things. We could put it back into the general fund, uh, and we know how tight our general fund is. Uh, or we could look at doing something more creative with that money in terms of um internet safety and and um identity theft, you know, education, something like that. I would suggest that when we see how much money it is, we can have that conversation at the board table to see um, if it's best put back into the general fund, or if there's opportunity for to kind of match it to the situation.
Or even will it be money, or will they just do something in kind, like we'll give you a year of free power school or?
And that's of course assuming that there is.
Yeah, I think every time my identity's been stolen, they give me like a four dollar PayPal gift card or something like that.
You're rich though, at this point.
Yeah, I mean, I guess just my, I I obviously, uh, you know, keeping our students safe and the fact that the information was stolen is really disturbing. We'll stop. Um, and, you know, I also don't like to set on the principle like they're a partner, we work with them, it's like suing them. I don't know. I just have some mixed feelings about it for that reason. And our very litigious society that we live in. Anyone else? Okay, this does recall a roll call vote.
Tom Buffett.
Uh, no.
Jason Burns.
Yes.
Katie Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Andrew Phelps.
Yes.
Laney Shrether.
Yes.
Jillian Win.
Yes.
Naomi Yes.
That's, yes, as habit, six to one. All right. Next up, we have a resolution regarding the thirty-one double A safety and security grant. Can I have a motion, please?
I motion that the board waive the reading and adopt the resolution allowing the district to participate in thirty-one double A funding without waiving any privileges until the legal challenge is resolved.
By trustee when, supported by trustee Kavanaugh. Any discussion there? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I just have it seven oh. Next up, we have a couple of discussion items. First up, we have an M O U regarding the senior center superintendent hood.
Yes, uh, thank you, President Buffett. So this um M O U with Meridian Township has been in the works for well over a year. Uh, we have worked with um uh, executive director Lance and I have worked with uh township closely on um trying to outline that relationship we currently have with the Meridian uh Senior Center. When the Meridian Senior Center first began operations, there was uh a contract, um, but that contract hadn't been renewed in years. Uh, and the lines were blurred about who is responsible for what in terms of the the senior center. So what we've done is worked together to outline how that relationship's going to work and for how long. Um, the money for the senior center is a flow through from the township to the district and then back out to the program. Um, but there were um some things we needed to, to note, like if how do we know what the district's providing, and if they buy something out of their their funding? What is that? And are they getting it back if, when the center closes? So you'll see in there, we've walked through a number of um items that help us better understand the relationship, so we can be good stewards to our seniors and not have that administrative lack of clarity get in the way of servicing, servicing them. So this does not um mean we're extending the senior center into the future post Chippewa. The township is The township is still looking for uh the new home for the Meridian Township Senior Center. What this does do is solidify the arrangement until that happens or until the township decides to um stop providing that service through the Oakhamis Schools.
Questions regarding the MOU?
Just, I might just say, I I I appreciate us continuing to, you know, work on our systems and, you know, memorialize practices to uh. I think that's a best practice. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Other questions, comments? Okay, so we will see this back on December eighth. Great. Uh, next up, we have other, another opportunity for public comment. Um, I don't see uh any additional blue sheets here, trustee Doxy, but anyone online, Mr. Brown?
No comments online.
Thank you so much. Okay, so uh, next up, we have a work session with our just very recently selected uh search firm. Um, we have Andy Engel here, uh, who you have all met uh from the Michigan Leadership Institute. And he's gonna uh walk us through the process and timeline and do some initial work with us. So thank you for being here. Did that be great?
Yep.
Um, so yeah, we'll do a, how about a three minute bio break?
Sounds great.
Um, so I'm gonna, I've got a short PowerPoint, just to the kind of over overview and orient you to the process, talk about some of the tools. Um, I pass out one is a very draft timeline, that timeline and this timeline represents.
Thank you. What might be the most aggressive timeline uh for your search? Uh, but again, we can work through that. Um, none of those dates are set in stone by any measure. It's simply a starting point for discussion. And so we can, we can come back to that, what we might find, because I know I'll be back in two weeks on December eighth. Some of this is really for for thought and ponder over two weeks, and we can finalize a large portion of this um at that time. So with that, um, I just, again, for as as much for your audience that's that's watching online, uh, just a little introduction about the Michigan Leadership Institute. My name's uh Andrew Engel. Um, I'm the president for Southwest Michigan. I live um on the on the coast of, not quite on the coast, I'm a mile, I'm a mile off the coast, but um, I live in Holland, Michigan, um, and serve, serve really West Michigan all the way up to a little bit north of Luddington. And really over here um into the mid Michigan area, I've done the, I've done searches uh for St. John's. I've done searches as far east as the Chelsea School District down in the Ann Arbor area where I also happen to work. Um, so good for um, good everywhere around. Um, just the Michigan Leadership Institute provides a host of comprehensive services around supporting really governance teams and leadership teams. Not good? Okay. Um, and um, so this is, this is what we were founded on, was doing executive searches, but we do a host of things. Obviously, I was here in the, in the um summertime to help with your um board retreat. Um, but we do, we do a wide variety um of other work as well, all in the spirit of serving students and helping um school districts and their leadership teams perform at their maximum capacity. I want you to know that our team collaborates on every search. Um, so we have a team of, it's it's twenty plus folks that that do currently work for the Leadership Institute have, or are former people that formerly worked for us, but are are fully retired now. Uh, but they still engage. Um, my former, the the person that was a mentor to me, Dave Phillips, was the previous um uh, president for Southwest Michigan. Um, he's fully retired now. We spent a half an hour on the phone today talking about um a search um on the west side and just kind of prospects and what they might be looking at for for potential interims, this, that, or the other thing. So we we all stay engaged with each other. We use our our collective knowledge and network. Um, last time we totaled it up, it made us feel pretty old, a hundred and thirty years of collective service um to public schools uh to a person. We're all central office or superintendent um folks. So we spent a lot, large part of our career working with boards, sitting in the seats that we're helping to either coach or facilitate searches for um et cetera. We've been around since nineteen ninety eight. Um, so coming up on our thirty year anniversary, um, and we changed hands a number of times. It's always good here to say that we're, we're owned by the Genesee Intermediate School District. Um, that happened back in two thousand eighteen. Um, it it is, in some ways, it's just a status of our nonprofit um nonprofit mindset, really serving, serving public institutions for the state of Michigan. We've actually started doing some work with municipalities as well. Um, but this also being a part of an ISD gives us full access to the resources of the ISD, their business office for for billing and in the finances, to the legal team, for anything that might come up, for us to support a search around the Open Meetings Act or FOIA requests. Um, just that, that full breadth of um of experience and knowledge base um that we have built in that we're not paying specific overhead or um, you know, other costs for that that ultimately keep our our ability to keep costs relatively low for school districts that we're working with. So I want you to know, the searches, we're here to do the search until we have a successful candidate. Our goal, plan is to 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 do the search and get to the end, but there's always that question, what if we don't like the pool? What if we, what if we just don't find somebody that we like? I am here to to support you until we find a successful candidate. So if things fall apart, if we have to go back to the drawing board, go to Plan B, Plan C, and all the contingencies that might come around it, it's my job to help you and support you with that. I don't expect that to happen. Um, but uh, you just need to know um that 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 will happen. Uh, and then the other thing you have, you've read, maybe the team shared uh a little bit before I walked in this evening. We give a one year guarantee with with very minor exceptions um about uh if the superintendent, your new superintendent were to leave, we'll conduct the the search again at a expense only basis. Um, and there is that option. We do a board, one board governance workshop for the board. Um, that could be, for example, wrapped into your retreat as part of your retreat next year. Um, but we do one board workshop. If you were to engage with us on a quarterly basis, we extend that guarantee to two years. Again, our goal is to strengthen, help grow, and help support the highest quality, um, highest functioning possible board governance team. So that's for consideration down the road, but just want you to know those details. So let's talk about the process. Um, really a three-phase process. Um, we're here tonight especially to talk about the planning and preparation stage. We should try and take a breath and not get um our head over our heels in terms of uh getting down the road and and what the prospects is, what candidates might look like. Let's make sure we pause and understand what we're looking for. What what we want is a um, is a, is a board, uh, what your community, what your staff is looking for in their next superintendent. So that when we start looking, when I specifically start looking at application, but when we get to the evening where you're gonna be looking at at applications and resume, you have, you have a frame of reference, what to put up against that um for what you need. The truth is, we're looking for the very best fit for the Oakhamis Public Schools. We certainly want the the best qualified, uh, the best possible candidate, but you might have two candidates that are very equal in their their qualifications, or might be slightly different. Um, there are gonna be some nuances that that might make one candidate a better fit for you um than another candidate this time, and really fit makes a difference in terms of potential longevity, um, service to the board, service to your community, service to your teaching staff, et cetera. So again, it's, it's, it's not just line up the candidates and let's rank him and find out who's the absolute best person on the board, because the person that's the best superintendent in District A may not be the best superintendent for the Oakhamis Public Schools um and vice versa. So a-again, we have to find that nuance and that, those specific things that are gonna make a difference for you that fit what's what you need next, what you need to uh in terms of a, of a baton pass um from superintendent hood um to the next superintendent, so that the district can continue to have success and grow and iterate and suit your students um to the highest level. The implementation phase is really about the the application timeline, interviews coming, uh, applications coming in, reviewing applications, selecting those to interview, the interview process all the way up until selecting a candidate. And then that final stage is really concluded with um the the last bits and pieces, uh, any final background checks. Um, uh, negotiating a contract, your final actual approval of the contract, and in your case, likely determining, you know, determining what the start date might be. So let's look at those just in a little more, this is kind of a, 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 a overview of the timeline, what it might look like. So it's about a twelve week process potentially. And again, that's not hard and fast. It could be ten weeks, it can be fifteen weeks. Um, it just, it just makes a difference. Uh, the season we're in right now with a a partial holiday week and with your, the winter recess coming, um, those things all have little impacts. And so they might stretch us out. The spring break um in in April or late March, depending what it is for you, um, can have an impact in terms of just making sure we have a pause or have a break. But really, we're in week one, then so this is, you know, meet with the board, um, gather some background, establish our parameters. That's why you have a a potential timeline tonight and and start thinking about things. Week two is really designed, weeks two and three are really designed around gathering input. Um, so what we're talking about with gathering input is surveying you, the board, surveying your staff and community, and then um holding a series of focus groups to gather community input. And I'll talk about what the, what the main topics of those are in just a minute. Um, your role here in this time is to help set the timeline and help give some direction and insight about the focus groups. How long do you want that survey open? Uh, but really, this is big, this is, this is the big piece in place for your community and your staff um to give input and insight. And it's very interesting, because you as a board are gonna give some input, you're gonna answer the same questions the community's gonna answer. It's a, it's a nice thing to say, okay, this is what we as a board see and want. See as our, see as what we desire in our next superintendent, see what our challenges are, see what our points of pride are. Let's see what the survey and what the focus groups say. Hopefully, you're all on the same page and all well aligned, but you may see some insights or some nuanced differences that may give you pause or may alter your thinking, or may, you may want to incorporate um into some of what you see as the profile that you're searching for in the superintendent. So once we get that going, and when we get all that input, we'll finalize our district profile or the posting profile. So that's everything, the posted profile is a three-page document essentially. We used to call it the brochure back in days before technology and computers, back in the nineties, when I was a teacher here, you know, we'd have a trifold or something um for you. But this is really just a three-page document. It's gives an overview and summary of the district, gives a summary of bullet points of the key qualifications and qualities we're looking for in the candidate. It talks about the application process, talks about some of the key timelines and deadlines um and and so forth. So it's, it's not some magical special thing, but it's just the added detail uh that somebody can look at for an outlook on their desk and really for themselves. We want candidates to look at that posting profile. We want them to call me and try and decide if they think Oakhamis might be the right, best fit for them um right now in their career. We'll have about a six, six, potentially eight week, um, kind of what I call for you, a quiet period. That's once the posting is, once, once you've agreed uh on on the posting. Um, and we have everything up, then it's really for me to watch the applications come in, start vetting candidates, start calling references, start doing research on the candidates, um, all the way up until that posting closes. About a week after the posting closes, I'll be here to meet with you as a board. We'll spend some time, most likely in closed session that evening, quite a bit of time, frankly. Um, where you'll have a full chance to read through, review all those materials. I'll certainly provide you summary information about the candidates and some insights and some opinions I have. But of course, those things aren't my decisions. That's the next time that you'll make a formal decision as a board about the search process.
And just a real thing, but just, I think it's worth mentioning, just so the whole board hears this. We had a discussion in our committee about how important it is over winter break that that posting is. Can you speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, so it's, um, so yeah, it's, it's absolutely valuable. I fully support the idea that we should get your posting up um as soon as possible. What we often do is we'll put a posting up that just is essentially a preliminary posting. It might not have that um full profile attached to it yet, but we want the, we want the word out on the shared website where jobs like this are posted, that this job is open and you want people to start considering and pondering. Certainly to know that the position is open in the month of December, so that a potential candidate has time um to, if they haven't, maybe they've been in their current position for seven or ten years and they're, they're ready, or they've been waiting for the Oakhamis job um to to be an opportunity for them. Um, this is their chance to think about it, to visit your community, to prepare their resume and cover letter and do some of the work. Maybe while they have some downtime or while they have some time to ponder and think about family, if this is the right um, the right job and right move for them. And then certainly, the the season of superintendent searches, if you know, there's a tax season every year, the superintendent search season, we see them at all times in the year. But this winter, January, February, March into April and May is really prime time for superintendent searches. Um, the majority of jobs are being filled with a July one start time, um, but there are other jobs that, the jobs that fill it at different times and places. Um, but yeah, definitely A, being out there annoying, there are gonna be other, you're gonna be potentially gonna be in competition with some other school districts for high quality candidates. So um, having people know that it's out there, getting in their mind, um, that this is the job and not potentially missing on anybody um is important. So and and really, the clock is, the clock is ticking in terms of having um, having a superintendent. I know superintendent Hood's um gonna be departing at the, in April. Um, and so, you know, one of our conversation points is to to think through whether, whether uh it's feasible or most possible to have somebody ready for April one, if somebody leaving their district potentially. Um, what does that time mean? Is that gonna be a barrier for somebody that they, they don't wanna leave until July one? Um, so thinking through and pondering that timeline, you don't have, really, you don't have to answer that question tonight. Um, part of the conversation about timeline here this evening is to give you a two-week window. We should, we should make that decision by December eighth, what we think we wanna do around um or on that night of December eighth, what we wanna think, you know, what's our target around um uh, when the hire might be. We had some conversation with the committee about saying fill the, you know, to be filled or to be determined between April one and July one. Some of that'll be just communication with me. Uh, we don't wanna, we wanna, again, be careful that we don't give anybody reason or pause to think that it's something that's out of line or uh, misaligned for them in terms of a a simple timeline or semantic thing, ninety days uh for what could last five, ten, or fifteen years is, we wanna be careful about that, that we don't, we don't miss a great candidate, just on a, on a technicality essentially. Um, the, so we'll select candidates. At some point, that's the, if you look on that um on that timeline, that's late January, um, about a week and a half, maybe a week and a half or two weeks after we select candidates, we would run first round interviews. Um, so that's the, our interviews typically, we recommend about ninety minutes per interview. Really, it's about seventy-five minutes with some transition time. It's time for about twenty-five questions in those interviews. Um, I'll provide, we recommend a script for that first interview, so we'll have time um between that candidate selection and that first round interview to review the script, who's asking what questions? What questions do you wanna ask? I'll give you a bunch of starters, um, but we can change and adjust those um as you see fit. And again, we can do that. A a lot of this work, one of some of the decision points are, do we wanna, some of these decisions that don't require a vote of the board? Um, or do we want to work on them collectively, all together in the room? Put it on the screen. I can edit things as we go. Uh, or I can send things to you via email or share them via Google, and you can respond to them with comments or notes. Um, and we can make adjustments as we go and then have a, have a way with either the committee, a committee, your executive committee, or via uh President Buffett and myself to just say at this point, we're gonna make a final decision and and be ready to to move forward on those. So we'll, we'll, we'll we'll have one opportunity to talk about one of those tonight, when we talk about how we wanna maybe approach the profile, but we'll have, we'll have just some conversation about how to collaborate and what you think is best on those. So you'll make that decision to select candidates. I recommend we set aside a potentially three nights for first round interviews. Um, again, you, you have good stamina as a board. I know you're, you're used to lengthy meetings. But you also wanna be careful for your participating public, how long um some of those interviews go. You can do three interviews in an evening, so but most districts end up with first round interviews that include between four and six candidates. So it's either three nights, two nights, two candidates per night, or two nights, three candidates per night. Either way, again, we're not gonna decide that right now. My recommendation is to, when we bring our, bring our calendars back, I'm gonna ask you to bring your calendars back on December eighth, so we can look and try and select dates. We'll try and look at the district calendar, make sure we don't screw up with holiday concerts or winter breaks, or, you know, um, LMLK weekends, whatever that might be. Um, uh, but we'll select those, you'll do those interviews. There is an opportunity in the interview process for community feedback. The community feedback becomes written at that point. Um, we've, I'll bring a feedback sheet. One-page sheet, this top half says, what did you, what did you like about this candidate interview, or what do you like about this candidate in general? Bottom half is what question, what additional questions do you have about this candidate? Folks can submit those to us at the conclusion of the interview. Um, and then we'll circulate those among the board, either as we go, at the end of one of the interview evenings, or all at once at the uh, as, at the conclusion of all the first round interviews. So at the last interview, take a recess, review at least the last sheets that came in, and then come back together and the board would deliberate. You'll do that in open session together. Um, what did you like about the candidates? Would you see this positives? What do you, what's leading you toward? Um, who should move forward in the process? Who would you like to learn more about? And hopefully narrow that field to maybe And hopefully narrow that field to maybe two or three. Approximately two weeks later, um we'd be back for a final round of interview. And then we recommend also in concert with that, in that final round window, often on the day of, the day before, we organize an opportunity for candidates to come visit the district and have a tour of the district. We might invite or ask somebody from your um central office team to hope to be the formal host, to give a tour, visit your buildings, walk around, meet your principals, meet your teachers, meet your support staff, meet your food service staff, stop by your transportation department and meet some bus staff, work, walk into some classrooms and meet some first graders and meet some seventh graders and meet some seniors um and give everybody a chance to have a little more informal time with your potential candidate. It's also great for the candidate to just walk around, see how it feels, meet people, get a, get a sense for the tone. We often in those, there's opportunity for the board in groups of one or two, one's not a group, but in groups of two or maybe singularly to join in and be a part of those walkarounds a little bit. So again, you can get a firsthand sense of what it's like, what's in this great chance to be in and around the buildings, but it's it gives you a a again, a more informal chance to see how that candidate interacts with students with a variety of staff, what they're like. It gives you a chance to have some informal conversation and just learn about who they are as a person or see what's going on. So it's not a, you know, it's not an interview per se, but it's a chance to see them and observe them. Kind of changed that in recent years. You might even see on this, it says board visitation to finalist work site if needed. What's often happened, the tradition of the visitation it tends to turn into a big dog and pony show. You you ask them to organize this big visit. Frankly, it's quite intrusive to the visiting district. Here you are kind of tramping around. We're coming to, we're coming to take your, we're expecting to have a great, beloved, outstanding, high-performing leader and hi, we're Okamis and we're here to take him away. It just, it it doesn't always feel very good. You can, you can certainly get some, again, some side conversations and some information. What I, what we found is that the the visit, the chance to be in the district and be together with your people and with the candidates is more informative and more helpful for all parties involved to just get that deeper sense of who we are, what we're about, um and does the fit feel right? So we would do those, again, depends on two or three candidates, day of, day before, whatnot.
Yeah, and one thing I just wanted to, just throughout there, you mentioned that I thought was just, and I obviously want to talk about this with the board, but in terms of bringing the community along with us, would maybe do some sort of community open house kind of thing that, you know, where the candidates have a chance to mingle with community members. Can you speak to that?
Exactly. And so the next thing, um so we would do those visits during the day, morning, afternoon, again, depending if there's two or three candidates, we'll figure out the the best. And again, with maybe superintendent, so it's your, um some of your assistant superintendents assistants work to create that schedule. But then say the last, the final round of interviews are going to start at six thirty or maybe seven P M, your regular board meeting time. We might do um a uh an open house meet and greet for the candidates. So find a location where there's two or three rooms and have some coffee and iced tea or um and some sugar cookies. Food service always has good sugar cookies, I found. And it shows.
The best sugar cookies in the state.
I tell you, I know.
Points of pride.
So yeah, do a forty-five minute to or to one hour, again, opportunity for people, anybody in the community, staff that you can't visit every classroom or every bus, um a chance for any staff that wants to just come and shake a hand or ask a question or say hello. A chance to do that meet and greet wise, make sure we have a little break before the first round interview um and then dive into those interviews. We typically can do all those final interviews in a single sitting. Again, two or three. It's obviously a big night. It can be a long couple of days for the board to be engaged in those little pieces and parts. But again, at the end of that interview process, we'll have had community opportunity for feedback sheets throughout. And then a chance for the board after the final interview to take a deep breath, do your bio break, read those feedback sheets, and then once again, come back and deliberate, talk through um and hopefully be ready to to make a decision about who you'd like to enter into a contract with at the end of that, um at the end of that evening. I take care of all the phone calls uh as we select candidates through the process. I'll call them that night before we, before, before you uh adjourn, make your final adjournment of the meeting, make sure the candidates are committed to accepting an interview or from the first round to the second round, make sure candidates are accepting a final round interview or even that night, uh trying to ensure that the candidate is is also willing to enter into contract negotiations. Try and do that just on the off chance that somebody for some reason catches us off guard and says I've accepted a job or um something's happened. My job is to try and anticipate all those things as we go and try and not not have any surprises. But what we don't want is to say we picked these six for interviews and then I say I'll call them tomorrow and then four accept and you do not, you don't have a meeting to 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 pick, maybe there were two more people on the list that were this close. So we want to make sure we don't exclude any opportunity or miss out on anybody. So I'll be actively doing that um as we go um throughout the process. I do talk to candidates. I, you know, use that sixth sense and experience to to have a pretty good guess on who you might interview or, you know, I'm asking people to have your phone on, be ready for a text message or a phone call or I'm going to call you either way. I know you're going to be in the conversation. I'm going to, I'm going to text you or call you either way so you know and so they know and we know. One of the things for you to think about, and again, this isn't a decision for you to make tonight, but we probably should make it. We we could make it on the eighth. We can wait till um we do the candidate selection is how do you want to handle? How do you handle regular meetings and your live streaming versus what you might do in a special meeting versus what you do to work session? There are, there are certainly boards that um live stream superintendent interviews. And there, I just want to give you a couple of cautions. We don't publish and give our questions to candidates ahead of time. If we live stream the meeting, a candidate can easily be on the Zoom. And you know, if they're on night two, they could watch the interviews um from night one. And also remind you that while it's a very public process by, because of the requirements of the state of Michigan and our laws, the folks that are going to be applying for this job are putting themselves out there in a potentially risky and perilous situation, people from all over the state. I know you're intending to uh to let your community watch and engage in the process. I fully support that. But somebody that's coming from southeast Michigan, they might have people watching the interview. Um we have to be very careful and have comments turned off during those interviews so that there's not a stream or a running thing. It just, it can, we have to be careful about live streaming deliberation because again, um if if there's there's more than wonderings or if there's negative comments or somebody unfortunately makes a mistake and falls on their face unintentionally. You know, you're, I know your purpose is to do no harm. You're trying to find the best thing and do the right thing. I just want to offer candidates as much is 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 reasonable for their personal and professional integrity um and privacy where you can in the process. So an alternate to live streaming your interviews is to record the interviews and then post them at the conclusion of all interviews. That gives your community an opportunity to to see the interviews and to see them on the in-between but not have to live stream them. You also run into the issue of how do people that are watching on the live stream give that feedback, collecting that feedback sheet and in in and whatnot and sharing with the board adds adds the complication on it. So again, it's it's not my decision, it's your decision. You probably can tell I have a slight, I do have a bit of an opinion about it. But I'm happy, I won't, you know, I, whatever you decide and whatever you feel is best and is the standard for your community, you'll have my support on it. Just something, um something to think about and be clear about with your community that this is, this is our intent and this is what we're going to do. Let's try and move on. I'm going to go past the timeline for a minute. I want to come back to again, planning preparation stage. I think I've talked through all of this. These are the three questions that we're going to focus on in this first community input, survey, focus group, board input phase. What are the unique skills, qualifications and characteristics desired of your new superintendent, your next superintendent? What are the challenges facing the Okamis Public Schools in the next three to five years? And what are your points of pride? Why is this the place that somebody should want to come and be the superintendent? And I think you know that. I think your community likely knows that, but there are going to be people that apply for this job that don't know Okamis as well as certainly as well as Okamis does, but certainly as well as mid Michigan does. There's no doubt your district that has high-profile, really strong brand, I'd call it. This is a premier position in the state of Michigan, um should be highly accepted. But this is also a chance to celebrate what those points of pride are and why this is such an important, valuable, um strong position. So I'll be asking you as a board to answer these questions to me simply through email. I'll compile them for you anonymously um and then give them back to you to read everybody's comments of a week or so to do that. We'll set, we can choose that date here in a few minutes. We'll have a survey that's going to go out. We typically have used Survey Monkey for the district. I had a little conversation with the committee about whether we should use Google Forms or the idea of making sure it's translatable. I actually had a um chance to talk to Assistant Superintendent Bailey today about just some of the the survey tools you're using as a district. So there's conversation about just using one of your district's survey tools and the accessible resources around those. So it feels as familiar as possible to your district, community and staff. Um we can talk about those nuances just in a little bit. And then I want to come and do a series of focus groups um for the community. So here's a, here's an example of um what those focus groups might look like. This is a single day. I want to meet with your administrators as a group. I want to meet with your parent leaders if possible. That's people that are presidents or on the boards of your P T Os of your music boosters, of your athletic boosters, um people that are in positions where they're working closely with your school administration. I want to talk with the the district office staff, the people that are, that are in and around the office with the superintendent on a regular basis and see the kind of work that's going on. And they probably see more of the superintendent's um just daily interactions than than anybody else. I'd love to meet with a group of community leaders. So these are local business folks, local nonprofit folks, people from your Rotary, your Kuanias Club or, you know, and what we want is we want to give a direct invite to, you know, ten to twenty people and and hopefully they can come at a time of their choosing. I want to meet with school staff. Um so that's not only teaching staff, but have an opportunity for your transportation staff, your food service staff, whatnot. Often what we'll do is I might, we might do a kind of post bus first AM bus run time where we can catch them and then kind of those after-school times is is um what might work. But usually a couple of school staff times, we can split this out to a couple of dates. Um and then always a chance to do an open community opportunity. We talked about potentially running that both in-person and with a Zoom option so people can engage in Zoom. I would just say I need a little help or support from your, maybe Nathan or somebody to help manage the Zoom so I can make sure I'm taking careful notes. Because I try and just take notes and keep a running dialogue of what's going on again, so that you can get the the best fix on that. Most of this, I'd say all of this. I'll tell you how many people we saw and showed up at our focus groups. But we really try and make this input generally anonymous. Don't focus on differentiating between what the teacher input and the parent input and the administrator input. All the inputs valuable in this, it all goes in the same bucket. Those things get repeated and are the drumbeat throughout the survey. Stand out and come forward. I didn't list students on this. I'd be happy to meet with student groups as well. So again, we can, we can do this often. Often I'll do it in a single day, but often I'll do it in two days. I'll come and do one full day, stay and do the community group and then get up the next day and come back and do a some additional focus groups the next day. It's good. My dad lives in Grand Ledge, so I can come here and do focus groups, go to Grand Ledge, see my dad, stay the night, watch the late news and then be back the next day. It's easy and it actually is a nice, nice bonus for me to be able to do that. So again, we don't have to decide on what those focus groups are exactly today. But pretty darn quick, um you'll see on there, I've proposed that we do focus groups, not, not next week, right when you're back after the break, but in that middle week between uh between week back from Thanksgiving, one week and then getaway week. So sometime in that week would be very important. I want to stress that it's, that this community input is important for the details of the posting, but it's more important that overall cerebral, I mean, there's going to be subtle things in this that we won't put in that profile. Some of the things about your challenges or points of pride, you can't put every item in there. It'd be a thirty-five page document. So we're going to take some things away from this that we just know are in my head and that are in your head that we're going to lay up against those things that people want. So even if people don't see every comment show up in that posting profile, we know that those comments are going to be important to us down the road as we go. Yeah, no, we should. We should start working on it today, at least pick the dates and then and then have some input on the who and, you know, we can, and then your team can help. Yep, yep.
Thank you. Right. So just again, selecting specifically which stakeholders you want to do folk, uh focus groups with, um it feels important to do tonight. And so you mentioned students and I think students would be definitely really important to include. And I'm glad you mentioned the all call also for some opportunities for for input, but Andy uh mentioned uh some other uh groups to 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 make sure that there's opportunities, again, different times a day with parents would be another kind of uh kind of consideration. Anything else who want to make sure? Yes, Tracy Kappa?
I think you had mentioned in our uh discussion last week that you you uh want to make sure that there aren't trustees at these events or.
Yeah, I asked that I can be, I'm all by myself at all these focus groups, no trustees, no administrators. Let me, let trust, please, please allow me to do it. Again, what we want to do is create the best opportunity so that there's A, no, no, no urge to respond or answer back. It gives me a chance to be innocently inquisitive about an issue or a topic or a point of pride that comes up or a particular attribute that might get mentioned. I can do a follow-up. But again, it puts on, it takes away any any, any um stigma that might come with the person who's always here or the person who always says that. I don't know that. And again, we're trying to just as clean slate as we can. What are we, what are we looking for? What are the important topics? Where are we going? And so again, our success is doing that. I'll give you, I'm not going to give you names, but I'll give you, I'll give you all the, all the anecdotal data um that comes along with it um to be a part of that. So thanks for that reminder.
Any other groups you want to make sure that Andy talks to? Twenty-four point is what I've learned is kind of PowerPoint minimum. But we will, we'll send this out and post it on Board Book. That's okay. So we can make sure that's shared in the community. Yeah, Tracy Phelps.
Just one thing, I'm glad you put a lot of the kind of parent leaders group, and you also mentioned the music boosters and athletic boosters. I think those are important groups as well. We have a district parent council, which is great, but as the kids get older, the parents are less involved in the parent P T O type stuff is, you know, and they might branch into others like music boosters, et cetera. So I like that idea of kind of branching into all those groups and not just, I I would caution if we just said, oh, we'll have a meeting with D P C. I just don't think that's enough and D P C's our district parent council. So I like that you're broadening that reach.
What what I'm going to ask, I'll, I'll be asking the district to help because obviously you all have the contacts is is either send direct invites um and you know, have to R S V P. We're, we're looking for people to try and hopefully commit. And obviously you know the times that they're um best available, but um yeah, casting a little wider net is helpful. Just ensure we get some critical mass.
And I'll say this, I think this is an important issue for the community. I mean, we're not going to find a time that's perfect for everybody. But I think people are, uh you know, they realize how important this is and I hope people make time to make this work.
And one of your options specifically with the parent groups is you can, we could have a specific district parent leader session, but if you want to run a an A M parent session and a after, you know, an evening parent session and just make sure that 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 your, that that some of those leader groups get a targeted additional information or we'd really love you to be here because of your role. They can just come and be a part of those conversations too. If you just want to have multiple parent opportunities with with a special request for people that are, that have shown and demonstrated uh long engagement to come, but I know you value all that input, so we can, we can certainly do that. My suggestion again is is to try and try and hone that list a little bit um in the short time that's available this week and be ready to send out invites, you know, we want invites to go out about a week ahead of the the forum. So we hopefully can send something out next Tuesday or Wednesday um to folks knowing that things are the following week.
So um what's your, what's the capacity? Like are we set to like a certain number of focus groups? Because I think, because I think I've counted about half a dozen or so that you had mentioned, but some of those I could imagine being multiple focus groups. So like, um you know, like school staff, I could see like a couple of different focus groups kind of around the districts. multiple focus groups. So like, um, you know, like school staff, I could see like a couple of different focus groups kind of around the districts. I just want to make sure that we can, you know, economize on your time.
So, um, I, there's not a, yeah. So I'd say it's about two days and one evening's worth of time is, is, is usually fits the bill. The focus groups, we usually plan for them to be approximately 45 minutes in length. No longer than an hour. I just need a chance to have a bite for lunch and, but again, to do a, to do a full day, if I can, you know, I can, I can get here as early as I need to get here to start on one day. But, but again, this is a, this is an opportunity to do six or seven in a single day. And then if there's three more that we need to do the following day, that certainly works if we are efficient with location. You know, that is, is economy of time for me, but if I need to travel to different building locations to be available, as long as we plan for that, I can accommodate that. So yeah, two days. You know, 10 or 12 is possible. This is, this is important to make sure you feel like you get. We cast the net as best we can. I want to, I want to be clear and candid. You might be disappointed with the turnout. It just, it, 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 A, this is a busy time of year, but I've done focus groups in January, I've done focus groups in March, I've done focus groups in August. And you know, the, you, you find the people who are engaged and who are paying attention to what's going on and it, it doesn't, you know, unless you have a major controversy, you have something huge going on, you might get a big turnout, but otherwise it, it, you know, it's, I'm, I'm all for casting the net. I'll sit and talk with three people for 45 minutes and take everything they have to say. I'm, I'm here to do it with the people that want to give the input. But just know and, and don't, don't set your expectations way over the moon that you're going to get 600 people participating in all these.
Again, I think just being clear about, you know, the timeline, here's the opportunities for input. This, this initial, it is an opportune time with the holiday, but it is what it is. The other piece is that we earlier shared that just some stakeholder surveys are just going out. So to the extent that this will be another survey, be, might be confusing a little bit, but I will do what we can to communicate the different purposes as clearly as we can. Yep. Trusty Kevin?
Thanks. And as we talked about last week too, it's great that we have all of our parent leaders because they're the ones who have devoted lots of time, but we also do want to hear the voices of parents who don't have the time to, to do district parent council or PTO. And so that's where our evening one, I think is going to be really important.
Just brainstorming here. I mean, this is a work session. I like the idea of maybe doing the Zoom during the day and then the kind of community forum one at the evening. You know what I mean? Just because we do want to hit the during the day is better for me or the evening is better for you. But I know we wanted to do a Zoom one as well, because I do think that's important for the people who can't, you know, get away. So just throwing that.
See what else we have.
I think I heard you say you would be happy to do it.
Yeah, I think we could.
Yeah, I was wondering because even some of our, um, family, they might have events in the evening, you know, but they still want to be part of the focus group, but then we can
That's probably the one example that I'm just going to need some representative of the district to help me manage call on people from the Zoom and make sure hands raised can help, help, help make sure I don't get stuck in the mechanics of it so that I don't lose track of the, the detail, the, the the high level, what people are saying part of it.
Yeah. I mean, your, your goal here is to take the feedback, not to, not to run the Zoom. So we can, we'll have to figure something out for that piece.
Okay. Let's, so I'm going to, Tom, I'm going to show you my 10 font just for fun. I know you can't read this. I'm just, it's, I'm being facetious. It is, yeah. So, so what I want to, what I just, what I want to talk about here is the idea. And we're going to start working backwards, but what I'd like to do, this is, this is the MASA website. It's a shared mystaff.com collaborative for, there's lots of job postings here for teachers and a variety of, of educational positions. But this is the, this is the site one way or another that you're going to end up if you're looking for a superintendent job in the state of Michigan. These are the current opening positions. This is water belief right here. This is their, what was posted a few weeks ago for water belief. They're working through their feedback process. This isn't an MLI search, but it would look very much the same. Just says preliminary posting, details forthcoming. It's just notice that the jobs open. My suggestion to you is that we post your job, post this position tomorrow, just like that. We just get the posting up. Put the basic details. So people know the jobs open. And then we set the goal for ourselves. I got it on the timeline. We can talk about specific date, but that, that second week in December, try and make sure that we have the full posting profile updated. And that's this full detail about, again, as I said, three pages has your district description, points of pride, your district data, the selection criteria and these top bullet points of the things that you're looking for. Salary and contract information. Frankly, we're going to write, it's going to be very generic. We're not going to put a number on there. That's something for us to talk about and people will be asking me about, but it's not something we necessarily want to publish. Application procedure and search timeline. So we can, again, the idea is well, we would want to finalize this potentially on the eighth. We could do that collectively together.
Sorry, one sec. So it is on Board Book now for the, those, uh, streaming and, and, uh, so yeah, it's up there. So people can follow along. Great. Thank you.
So your recommendation is not to put the, the salary and benefits on there. Is there a reason?
Yeah, I, I, well, A, first and first and foremost, I want people, I don't want to, I don't want to be limiting in terms of who we're going to get in the pool based on dollar amount only. And I want to make sure you have enough flexibility depending on experience, tenure, prior work that you have some, some reason or rationale. Again, I'd like to know what that ballpark is and have some conversation with the board, with the committee about that so that I can, I'm able to talk with candidates about it. But it just, when you post those numbers, you post a range. I mean, this is true with most jobs. When people look for a job, they see a range. Oh, I'm going to be at the top end of that range. It just can create a stumbling block for people before you're even out of the gate. So I, we, we just have been typically careful to not put a specific range or, or be detailed on that. Again, give the chance to, to do some of your own research, do some of our own comparison. Make sure we're going to be in the right competitive ballpark or frame. But yeah, just leave that in the background. Again, you want, A, you want somebody that wants to be in Okemos because it's Okemos. That doesn't mean they're going to get underpaid or you should, you should do anything not to compensate them every bit their worth and every bit what this job is worth. But we're, we're more, I want people to focus on page one, page two about why this is a good fit and we'll get to the salary and compensation at the appropriate time with them. So I think I rambled enough. I'm gonna so, uh, let's talk, let's, can we, I, I think let's go back and talk timeline a little bit again.
Your handout, uh, it, it, it has tomorrow is December 25th, but that is November 25th. I'm sure.
Oh, it is.
Yes.
Thank you. Just fix that on my sheet, the sheet. I've got this. The document up here. So again, if we do the posting only, if you're okay with that, we get the posting up tomorrow. And the, the clock's going, and then we, we work to the week of December 8 to finalize that posting. Again, either that night, the eight, or I talked with the committee, we can, we can finalize it tonight. That night is a group. The challenge is, do you want to see all the feedback from the surveys and the focus groups before we put the final button on it? So if, if you do, and I support that, then what we would do is just make sure that you have a chance to see all that feedback and information. Asynchronously, we would, we would work through that final process. If we, I put out a call via email for any comments, feedback, you know, here's all the feedback sheets. Any, any feedback, please submit it to me by this date. And then I would circle back either with Tom or Tom, I'm sorry, President Buffett and the, uh, or the executive team. We would have a brief meeting or a phone call to just say, this is all the feedback we've got. These are the adjustments we've made and we're going to finalize it and post it on that Friday or Monday, the 15th or something.
So I think, as you said earlier, again, we're going to learn some things through the, uh, uh, community input, stakeholder input. And I definitely wouldn't want to finalize it at our next board meeting for that reason. Cause now that said, you know, and we talked about this during our Zoom last Friday, you know, the, the two options are to whether to schedule a meeting the week of December 15th. Right? Which is a tough week to schedule a meeting or do what Andy just described, which is the asynchronous feedback. And I just want you to think about the strategic planning goals as a mental model of what that looks like. You know, here they are. Okay. What do you think? So there'd be some iteration possibility. And, uh, but it would, you know, ultimately they would get, uh, unlike the strategic planning goals, they wouldn't ultimately, the profile wouldn't be voted on as a whole board to move forward. It would just be the, the, the best effort to incorporate everyone's feedback on the profile as drafted. So I just want to kind of throw it out there because we talked quite a bit about this last Friday and the pros and cons. So, um, it would anyone like to argue for trying to, uh, schedule a meeting on the week of December 15th? Trusty, yeah?
I'm just thinking if we had any other business that maybe needed to get taken care of before the end of the year as well, should we have something on the calendar? That we have is just holding it. Or is that something we could?
I mean, we, we, we might have some other business. We can certainly pull the board. It could be a tomorrow thing, I think. I mean,
Yes.
Right. And just see if there's a date. And if there is a date, then great. Then we can do both, uh, to take care of this on that meeting. Um, and so we can kind of then say, if, if it feels a little bit like a miracle, if we come up with a date that would work for all of us. But if we do, then yes. And if not, then we'll do it asynchronously.
That, yeah, I, 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 I agree. I think it's going to be, I mean, frankly, next to impossible to find a date where everyone could be there. And I wouldn't want a situation where we can only get four and then the other three lose out on the ability to, you know, provide feedback on the profile. That's why I like the asynchronous idea. Cause it's much easier for all board members, considering our time restraints to be able to provide feedback. And plus I, I, I really think that we're going to see themes. I'm sure that happens. And you know, as we go, you know what I mean? Like if we're not going to be shocked by a lot of what we hear. Certainly there'll be some learnings. Um, but I think we'll be able to I'm hoping at least it's going to be a lot of fine tuning, not invention of the wheel, if you will. So, but I just want everyone to be involved. I think that's really important. I don't want a situation where all, all that works for four, I guess we'll schedule a meeting that day. And then, you know, half the board loses out on the ability to, to, to provide feedback. So this is my two cents.
So how this, how that might look is again, if we have those forums on say December nine and 10, you, again, we, you can decide that in the next few days. If we have those forums on the ninth and 10th, my goal would be to provide all the survey results, feedback, everything to the board, probably on the Friday of that week. You'd essentially, if we're going to do it asynchronously, I'd say like you have the weekend to respond. So respond by Monday at 8:00 AM. Uh, and then that gives, and then President Buffett and I would try and maybe convene, make any, make any final edits, make, have come to, come to a conclusion. I'd be asking for his support essentially on my decision or accommodation of the input and requests so that we could finalize, have that, have that final profile posted, added to the website on the 15th. If, if we do it that way. And, and I'll just say, if you want to do an in-person meeting, uh, it's no problem. I just, I am booked on the 15th in the evening. I've got, I've actually got two board meetings I'm supposed to be at, and I don't know, I'm going to do it yet.
Try the hybrid. Thoughts about that? I mean, again, we're trying to schedule this important work in the middle of the holiday season. So it's not easy, but okay. So we'll put some poll people tomorrow and just see if there's a, there is, happens to be a date. And if not, then we'll go with this plan of receiving this synthesized community feedback. I mean, uh, on the, the Friday, the 12th, and then having the weekend to provide input.
Most, most boards are able to do this successfully asynchronously. That's, that's most common. And I think if we commit to spending a little bit of time on this, on the eighth, look through it, give some general input and then just have a chance after all the input to make any, any last comments, any final inputs. Once you've seen everything from everybody. I think you'll, you'll be pretty satisfied. Keep me posted on that.
Yes, if we come up with it, yes. But we'll, it's just ask trustees to respond quickly to the polling email. So we can get our, our process in place here.
If I can just work on the list here. So I changed November 25th, we're going to, we'll post the position tomorrow. Is it acceptable to you as board members to submit? I'll send you those three questions via email tomorrow. Can you respond to me by Monday, December 1st? End of business. Is that too short a time with your own personal plans for the holidays?
I think it's fine.
Yeah. Those three questions. Yeah, sure.
I like to get yours. I, I do like to get yours upfront. And first, again, that gives you a frame of reference as you see everything else come in. So survey. You want to, so where are you at with getting the survey out? I know we've just got some other surveys out. It's hard to send emails and make sure they get paid attention to. So you could try and send the survey out as soon as tomorrow. You could wait till the first. You know, again, how, the duration of survey availability, if you do put it out this week, tomorrow, Wednesday, then you are giving people additional opportunity to complete the survey over the holiday weekend and then into that. But again, it's, we gotta pick an end date about the middle of that week, probably December 9th, I have December 7th on here.
Is your survey similar to what you're asking board members?
It's exactly the same.
So it is short. Um, I mean, I don't know. I would, yeah.
Have this overlap with the other survey. Cause people get confused about which one they've taken and which one they've not.
So what's the timeframe of the other surveys?
Is it, uh, well, it opens now. And then went through.
I thought it was like, it'd be like next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday. Yeah. Right after the holiday.
That's when the last day for the, and this is for staff.
And then it's already gone.
The ball's already out of the hand and towards the hoop on that.
Yeah.
Yes.
No, no, I know. I'm just saying to make sure we're clear. That's not a
Minus 10 where they say, go for, go for left off.
Yeah. I, I, I agree with you. I think, I think, uh, cause people will get confused. So I think that means less time potentially, but
But those are three questions. I feel like, yeah, hopefully you can answer them. Right. Yeah. You know.
Also I've, in the surveys I've done, you get about 40 or 50% of all the responses you're ever going to get in the first 48 hours.
Yeah. So uh, to go out on say just, it would be later than you'd want and maybe a shorter amount of open time than we want. But the proposal to go down the third or on the second. And, and give it a week to the night. Andy, is that enough time for you to do your synthesis?
Well, maybe you could do it. Cause we do it through the end of whenever the focus groups are. So if we do the focus groups through the 10th, keep it open till the 10th. And then you have your time to, you know, I don't know. Does that make sense?
It's, it's a pretty quick for us. For me, frankly, it's pretty quick to close the survey. I'm going to download it. I'm going to send it to you. You can do some word clouding or keyword searching. You're going to, you're going to do more, be able to do more with that survey than I ever could frankly. But, uh, you know, it's, it's one of those things, let your, let everybody do. It's easy. That's a quick and easy turnaround for me. So we leave it open example till Thursday. I asked for the results Friday morning. I can get it to you by Friday at noon and you'll have the weekend to review it.
I thank you for clarifying. I had the wrong picture. I thought, I appreciate getting the raw results, right? I was thinking of
Yeah.
Okay. So yeah, I keep it open until Thursday, Friday of that week or at, at the end of focus groups.
Again, let me just clear, an important part of this is allowing all of you a chance to synthesize this for yourself.
Right.
Um, I'm here to help facilitate and do some things for you. I don't know. I don't know a lot of what I don't know about Okemos and the subtlety of all that you know and can see and read through those comments. I want to give you a chance to really immerse yourself in and take it in and try and read it and do your own synthesis of it, frankly.
Tracy Doxie then just.
Yes, I just want to go back to, um, the job posting. I know you recommend that we don't include a salary range, but I just did a quick search on a few current superintendent open positions. And the few that I looked at do include a salary range. And I guess I want some input from my colleagues here on including the range. I mean, it's including the range. I mean, it's being transparent. It is a range. I understand what your, your recommendation in terms of you don't want people focused on that. But most job postings, at least that I'm familiar with, you see the range because I mean, that is a factor into even putting your hat in. So I, I
It can be a recruiting tool.
Understood.
Absolutely. It absolutely can be a recruiting tool.
Yes, so thoughts are.
It's a, it works session. Just go ahead and speak out.
Yes, I. Um, but I was also wondering about to survey them also wondering.
Um. Oh, okay, um. Um, so going back to the survey, I was also wondering whether we should ask building leaders like principals uh, to send out a note, hey, FYI, on Friday, whenever that date happens to be, a short survey will come out so we can maximize the input. Because, yeah.
Yeah, I would, I do suggest regarding the survey, a direct email to your parent groups, your staff groups, inviting them with a link to the survey, inviting them um, to participate. And then certainly any follow-up by building leaders or parent group leaders to encourage folks to take part in that is important.
Salary discussion. I mean, I do understand that your, your point, but I, same thing, like if it's something people are gonna be more interested in applying, but I for sure wanna have. We need to have a discussion on what that salary range is gonna be. Um, and we need to have that, you know, in a public meeting at the table, but then also is that gonna delay our posting? Or maybe that gets added later? You know, because we do need to have that discussion and our timeline is.
Yeah, that's certainly an edit that could be made down the road. I, I'd suggest, I mean, it's not, it's definitely not a decision you have to make tonight. It's certainly, you're hearing that you, you're interested and you wanna do that. Um, but it is a key difference between M A S B and M L I that they often do and we often don't. But again, we can, we, we can accommodate. I definitely won't, wouldn't hold you back from that. Um, we could have that conversation on the eighth to add that. Or if you need a little more time and we wanna add it as it gets into the last two weeks of the posting, we could, we could add it um, towards the very end, uh, when you feel like you're ready for it.
And is that a discussion that you could help lead or help give us the state of superintendent salaries or what the field is like right now? I mean, can you give us some information on you know, what the situation really is like for hiring?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that I, I won't attempt to do that tonight, but we.
So December 8th, excuse me, that'll be part of our conversation and, and you know, and, and ongoing work in this process.
Yep, great. Great. Okay.
So just point of clarification, I support getting the posting up as soon as possible with details to come such as salary range. Thank you.
Understood. Thank you. Um, so I'm just gonna put down December 2 to December 11. That's the Thursday of that week that we're gonna target the focus, focus groups. That gives a chance for me to get it closed at the end of the day, 4:00 PM on the 11th. And, and opened up after that. Um, and I'm gonna say superintendent profile added on Monday, the 15th, like we talked about. One way or another, we can, again, we can move that date back uh, pending your decision on uh, if you find a date and you wanna get together collectively to, to look one more time at that um, profile. We could do that.
Yes, question about that as we're serving board members for that potential time. How long a duration would that meeting be? I'm just trying to figure out.
Frankly, I don't think that meeting would be terribly long.
Hour, hour and a half.
An hour, maybe at the most, if that's our sole item. I might, I might ask if that's a meeting I might be able to do with you virtually. Um, just join you virtually and again, edit and talk through those things potentially because it's, I, I think it'd be, I think it'd potentially be pretty quick.
Okay, I'll put that in. I just wanna know.
Thank you.
When we pull them. Sorry, Andy, you said uh, the second to the 11th for focus groups. That's for the s- survey, right?
Second, yeah, second to 11th for the.
Survey. Okay, we're looking at the week of the uh, 8th, but not the uh, the 9th through the uh, what, 11th?
That suggests the focus groups on Tuesday or Wednesday. Tuesday went nine, nine, 10 or 11. Or nine, two, potentially two out of those three days.
Perfect. Thank you.
Kind of put in a, uh, I guess a request in terms of this, I understand we're polling board members. If we can't get everyone, I would prefer to not do it. Um, just in my opinion, just because I don't wanna, to me, that's an important piece. I don't want a board member to lose out on the ability to provide input just because they had a previously, I mean, this is a very busy time of year. I think we wanna acknowledge that. I don't wanna lose out on a board member's voice because of that. So I mean, just my two cents.
Yeah, I, I, I agree also. So it'll be either all of us or we'll do asynchronous.
We can do that. You know, we, again, I do that primarily in this, it, with this thing, I primarily, the, my experience has been, we're able to accomplish that. If we do it asynchronously via email, answer and response. Um, but if any, if anybody wants to talk about it, you're, you can call me and I'd be happy to talk it through with you um, one-on-one. That, that's true throughout the process. You wanna, if you wanna chat, text, send me a text, give me a call. And I'm happy to chat with you and help you think through what, what's on your mind. Um, I would suggest at this point, those are the, the, I mean, we've got this, that's where we need to be tonight. We can finalize the posting close date and the rest of the timeline um, on the eighth. In fact, I wanna give you a little think time about that. Um, I set you up as a January 13th as the potential closing date. That would get us to be able to first round interviews um, by before the end of January, second round interviews in mid-February, that's six weeks ahead of April 1. So you would have the opportunity, if a selected candidate is available, that potentially that candidate could start as soon as April 1. It doesn't mean they have to, doesn't mean there are other options or we don't wanna be able to negotiate or work that through with somebody. Um, but this gives you that chance to do that. The complete other school of thinking might be to say, let's just slow this down. Let's give the posting the full the full month of January or even into the first full week of February. Let's make sure we got um, you know, two full months uh, of this posting being up. And let's really look to start the interview process by the end of February. Have the final interviews in March and um, proceed forward. Maybe with the idea, you know, again, maybe with the idea of thinking that, that July 1 is gonna be an okay start date. And we figure out what the 90-day gap's gonna look like for the district in terms of interim superintendent, temporary leadership um, to get you through. Again, I just wanna be careful. I don't, I, I haven't spoken to anybody yet about um, about this position, but I wanna be careful that we don't eliminate somebody um, because of, because of just 90 days. Um, and, and be that. So again, that's, you can a pause here and let you talk about that a little bit tonight, but I don't think you have to make that decision tonight. You can think about it. We can come back and talk earnestly about that. That'd be a key topic for us to talk about on the eighth.
Yes, on the eighth. That's great.
That's the advantage of not putting that other posting thing up. We don't have to put any of these other dates out there yet. Um, we just know it's probably gonna end sometime late in January. So you just gotta, we get to create enough gaps between the closing date in my chance to meet with you. So I have, we have some time to prepare materials. Um, I, there's always a couple of candidates that wait till the last minute. You might just, or I get surprised by somebody that I didn't expect. I need a chance to do a little final vetting, summarize, make my final notes, do those things. One question for all of you, while I'm thinking of it, is um, we typically bring all the candidate materials in binders and on printed paper. Uh, but seeing that you're a board that's using Board Book um, the way you are, um, we can provide you all of the materials electronically. Um, if you choose, but again, looking, it, it's your preference. Do you wanna look at resumes and applications electronically, or do you want paper so that you're able to highlight um, and make notes on so and so forth? Do, again, you don't have to decide that tonight. We can decide that on the eighth, but I want you to know, we, we can, it it's really an either or thing, really works one way or the other, just in terms of of support. So we all know where we're going, but I, we can do it either. It would ultimately be shared through a Google Drive that would, would be retained ownership with us at M L I. And so as you don't select candidates, we're gonna pull their materials back. Um, there's a few supporting materials. It's a place where I'll probably, I probably in your case, I would share a lot of the documents that we're gonna use via Google Drive uh, directly anyways, so that you can see and use those things, but it's your priority.
Just help me understand this. So I think that through, this is something that's gonna occur in closed session.
Yes.
Just with the board members and you.
Yes.
And where we kind of discuss the candidates. So this isn't something where we're out, I mean, I, I'm just trying to.
That's the first time you're gonna, first time you just like, just like all closed session, it's confidential materials, you're gonna get it.
So we're gonna be sitting in there. I mean, I'm just, I mean, like, and you're gonna send us a link in there. We're not gonna see it beforehand.
Right.
Okay, that's interesting, interesting.
In that case, I would vote for paper because I'm, I need like multiple screens. So the idea to like sort piles and move things around.
Yeah, no, I think that's how you're, how it's actually gonna happen in practice. I think it's an important contest.
Yeah. Okay, plan on paper. It's no problem. That's this.
Okay, uh, any questions given this overview?
I have one more.
Yes.
Sorry.
Okay.
Uh, we talked about survey and language translation. Um, so I've been doing a little research, trying to compare what, what I I don't know exactly what M A S B does and what they're doing with um, Google Forms. Um, are there, are there specific languages you want the survey translated for? Or?
We have, how many languages? Over 40.
Over, yeah. So hopefully we will be able to translate. And what do we do now? So it's like, you can do it in any language?
Using different software, they've been translating. And the three questions, it should be a little bit easier. It's not a lot of context to play it over. There is not like a magical, you can count it just, I would snap my fingers.
And then does it translate with responses? That? They assume they can res- you can respond in any language.
I don't need to respond.
So must magically translate. So this is what we had a short conversation about today. I asked for some grace and if maybe just it was helpful. I can give those three questions to Assistant Superintendent Bailey. And if you're willing to deliver that survey, manage it confidentially, close it and provide it to me and I'll provide it to you. We can do that. I, I apologize for asking for help or support, but it may be beneficial for your district community to have that opportunity, just like they do in other things.
I would have you work with our communications department.
Happy to do that. Yep.
For the.
Whoever has access to your survey tools that can do that.
Yeah, for in case I might, for the family survey, we're translating into five languages.
We could use the same five.
Yeah.
Side most common.
Yeah.
Okay, and we have until December 2nd, uh, I mean, which is not that far away, but to nail that down.
Trusty Burns, can I just, maybe I can catch those five languages? Do you know those off the top of your head? I can catch those with you after the meeting or?
Yeah.
We'll just do that.
Okay.
Because we can translate it straight away like that and just offer it in those five languages.
Fantastic. Well, listen, thank you again. Uh, we're excited about this process. It is, um, you know, I think your advice to be uh, excited and nervous is, is good. We take it really uh, very, very seriously and um, um, really appreciate the guidance, support that you'll provide throughout the process. So thank you.
Looking forward to it too. Thanks for your time. See you in two weeks.
Okay, um, with that, um, are there any other matters for the good little hole? Well, I'd just like to wish everyone a very safe and wonderful um, holiday and um, uh, thank you. And we are adjourned at 9:57.